We'll call our meeting to order. If everybody got a seat, there, I think there might be additional seats if you don't have any up in here, I see a couple. So, a roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The records should reflect that all members are present with the exception of Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
If all will please rise, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Green.
Please join me in honoring our nation and our pledge of allegiance. Ready to begin. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, indivisible, with the British Empire.
Aww. 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 Aww.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation for $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. A little reminder, and we'd like to remind everybody that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. This ordinance was adopted to allow public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. Applause is appropriate for items listed under the presentation portion of the agenda only, and this is also listed on the Agenda cover sheet. So, we'll be polite to all of you, and we expect you to be polite to all of us. So with that, I'll have the approval of the agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are only one item today that was pulled, and that was the closed session agenda item, which was pulled earlier in the day.
Okay, I have our presentations, I have two of them tonight. First one is, I'd like to invite my city council members, as well as Theron Deekman, the Director of Recreation and Community Services, to join me at the podium for our first presentation, a proclamation declaring July to be Park and Recreation Month in the city of Vista. Okay, we have a proclamation here that reads, "Whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, parks and recreation programs are an integral part of our communities throughout this country, including the city of Vista. Whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. Parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. Whereas the park and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. The parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect our groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air that we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. Whereas the city of Vista's Recreation and Community Services Department operates many recreation and cultural arts attractions, and delivers top-quality adult, youth, and senior recreation activities that enrich the lives of Vista residents. Whereas the city of Vista's Public Works Department maintains the city's 200 acres of parkland for the enjoyment of residents and vistas alike. So, whereas the city recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore be resolved by the member and the members of the Vista City Council that we hereby recognize the month of July as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Vista." So, congratulations to Theron, who's the head of our Parks and Recreation Department. And would you want to say anything?
Just briefly.
Doesn't want to say anything?
Yeah.
Okay, congratulations then.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Our second presentation is a Vista Fire Department update by our Fire Chief Jeff Hahn.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Jeff Hahn, your fire chief. And I have your semi-annual update. I think we do. There we go. Okay, first we'll take a look at our statistics. We'll take a look in two chunks. We had, last time we looked at 2016, so for the year 2017, total fires, we ran 286 in the year with a fire loss of approximately $1.6 million, and property saved at approximately $18.2 million. Again, property saved is, are those structures that were involved in fire that we were able to stop the fire before it took the rest of the structure and content. So that's where that figure comes from. EMS responses, just under 10,000 at 9,989. And total calls for the year in 2017, 14,477. Since we are in June and halfway through the year, I thought I would put up this statistic. So far this year, we've run 110 fires. Fire loss for this half of the year in 2018, sitting at 490,000 with 11.5 million in property saved. Total EMS runs right now run about 4,300. Total calls are at 6,222. We spoke last time about our plans for our fire engines, and we have since taken delivery, and they were placed in service, two of them in May, and one this month in June. The new engines are in service at fire stations two, three, and four. Another subject we looked at last time, obviously, we put the fourth ambulance in service, and we placed that ambulance at Fire Station Three. We did a little bit of research and science to try to figure out where the best location for that would be to distribute the call loading, and how busy the ambulances would be. Although we haven't had it in service for an entire year, I looked at the numbers and percentage of transports by unit, which is the chart you see in front of you, and we got, I'm very pleased with the distribution that we have between the four units. So you'll see they're fairly well-balanced, not entirely equal, but fairly well-balanced in terms of the number of patients that are taken to the hospital. So it looks like we have that in effective location. Next time I come before you, once we have a complete year of data, we're going to do another unit hour utilization study and see where we're at. But based on this indicator, I think we're going to do real good there. We also instituted a first responder fee, and we were hoping, we projected, we would bring in 90,000 in the first year, and I'm happy to report, since we put it into effect in November, from November to May, we were able to collect 94,000 from insurance companies. Our estimated year-end total, if we project that forward, we're expecting about 162,000. And that goes against that $1.1 million cost for the fourth ambulance to help offset those Another subject that we talked about last time was behavioral health. And as you'll recall, PTSI now, we call it, instead of PTSD, they're looking at it as a post-traumatic stress injury, is the new terminology, which includes depression, suicide, and those issues are still significant. You'll recall in 2015 and 16, suicide was the leading cause of firefighter death nationwide. Sad to report in 2017, that remains the leading cause of death for firefighters nationwide. However, Vista Fire continues to be the leader in this region addressing these issues. In 2017, we hosted a behavioral health peer team training from the IAFF here in this building. We trained 30 firefighters, not only from Vista, but from around the North Zone, around the county, and we had actually several from Northern California that came down to attend the class. This month, we hosted another class of 30, and again, from a few from Vista, many from around the county, zone, and state. Our Fire Strong website that we put together for behavioral health, where firefighters can go for information, to find our peer team members, to reach out for help, to make telephone calls, received over 250 hits from zone personnel. Our program here in Vista, we've had 20-plus contacts with peer team members and our clinician, and that's not just Vista Fire, but that's zone-wide. We've opened up those services and those peer team members to members of the fire service zone-wide, which is encompassing Northern San Diego County. We continue to be the leader in addressing these issues regionally. Our clinician has taught over 20 classes, both here at Vista Fire and other departments around the zone, on these issues, and that is including two classes we've held for spouses of firefighters. At this point, we're now, the vision is to have a joint forces, so we have a peer team that functions as a large team throughout the zone, so members of the fire service can reach out to any department, any member throughout the zone for help. And now for the fire service outlook. I attended, actually today, up in Riverside at South Ops, another update to this, and San Diego County Fire Chiefs, we brought together experts in climatology, weather, fuels, and fire prediction, to look at and try to predict the fire season this year. The National Weather Service experts that presented to us are reporting that they're seeing more weather extremes than they've ever seen before. Some of the things they pointed out, last winter started with the driest continual period on record since they began keeping records for San Diego County. We're in the top five warmest winters on record. We're sitting at about 35% or less in some areas of San Diego for precipitation. San Diego had about half of the normal rainfall for March, which sometimes the March miracle happens, but we're well below, we're well below where we should be. Northern California, remember, had a lot of weather, the weather pattern, if you think of a hose hitting California, the hose was turned on to central Northern California, but completely missed us. They had two to three times the normal precipitation in both rain and snow up in that area. Nonetheless, for statewide, May was the first month in 55 consecutive months that San Diego was not above-average temperatures. So it's a really long, really dry, really warm stretch of weather that we've had. And it was really the May gray that finally broke that temperature being so high. Warmest period ever on record for average temperature for us, a couple more statistics. Number seven driest for the entire state, number two driest on record for San Diego County for this winter. And even with that March miracle, we're still, the Sierra snowpack is about half of average. So the watershed is very low. Taking a look at the drought map here, you'll see, and this is from May, and if you'll recall, May and the first part of June, those red areas that are basically over the four corners, Colorado, New Mexico, and Utah, saw elevated fire activity, quite significant fire activity in those areas already this year. But you'll see our little corner of California, we are still classified as severe drought. So, the prediction is for a dry, hot summer with above-average fire potential. I had to put the picture in here, this is actually off the Lilac Fire that we had in December. Just to the left side of the picture is Interstate 15. And there is a little perspective in this picture, but you'll note the telephone pole and the, that's a DC-10. And he is pretty much at treetop level making a drop on the initial stages of that fire. And the background is the Mobile Home Park that was so hard-hit. So back to the maps, this is a conglomeration of not just weather, but fuel types, fuel moisture, and fuel densities that are calculating the wildfire potential. Well, this is obviously for the whole country, but you can again see that region that's in the four corners to the east, that has been getting significant wildfires already this year, and our little section of Southern California. And you'll also notice the little patch in Northern California where they're having the fire problem right now as we speak. In fact, we have about 32 engines out of our operational area, including one from Vista up on those fires right now. As we move into July for next month, you'll see that the fire potential really shifts to the west and includes all of the Front Range, all the way down here to San Diego County where we are, as well as the Sierra Back Range, and then up into Northern California and Oregon. And that potential is pretty much the story, is going to be the fire season, they haven't, they've looked out into August, and it expands into the Western Rockies range, and again, the Sierra Front Range. We did speak a little bit about tree mortality last time, and although the tree mortality has slowed because we had so much central and Northern California precipitation, those dead trees are still there. About 102 million dead trees since 2010. And those hazards still exist, and in fact, each year they get a little worse because the trees are dead. And obviously, they're fuel, and they're subjected now that they're dead to winds and the action of fires and coming down, so it makes it more, a more significant fire problem. So again, what have we been doing here locally in Vista to protect against wildfire? We responded, in our jurisdiction, 19 times in 2017, and 11 times this year, to wildfires, vegetation fires, and put them out before they became large and more destructive. When we have fire weather, we release information to the public on social media, we have signs that are posted out to the entrances to our high wildland areas, we put red flags on those signs, we put red flags on our station flagpoles, and try to let the public know when danger is at its highest. We also put out senior patrols, and we also have fire engines that we bring in on patrol to patrol our higher wildland areas in our jurisdiction, to look for people that may be doing hazardous activities and/or to find and report fires early. In addition, our vegetation management program, we performed 1,293 vegetation inspections in 2017, 557 of those within the city limits proper. And the balance of those are typically around in the fire protection district with the entrances to the city. This year, so far, we've performed 1,142 vegetation inspections, with 481 of those being within the city limits. And I do have to give a shout-out to our IT and GIS departments. This year, we were able to get those done in record time using technology. So we were able to really get out there and get out there early and get them wrapped up and done and prepared before the weather hit, which was, which is really good with their support. Other inspections, our Fire Prevention Bureau is busy, 229 building inspections last year of all of these different types, to keep us safe from fire from other causes. And again, we're here 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to keep the public safe, and when incidents do occur, respond quickly and make things better for our citizens. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chief Hahn. I just wanted to say thank you for all of the work that you and the department does for our city. And we are one of the busiest departments in the county, is what I keep hearing, not just from our department, but from other areas. Being on the Sandag Public Safety Committee, I hear a lot from the regional fire service, and we get lots of kudos up here, so I wanted to make sure I shared that with you. But also, the fourth ambulance, I'm very proud that we were able to bring that fourth ambulance back online. That was very important to our community and to our public safety, and so I'm glad that we did, and it seems to have been the right decision to make at the right time, based on your graph. So I'm very proud of that. We won't tell the city manager, but we need to look at the fifth ambulance. But also, it's a great reminder in your graphs, it's a great reminder, I had some very dear friends and family members who lost their homes in the fire up north, and up in Ventura last year. And it's just a good reminder to everybody that we don't have a fire season any longer in California or in Southern California. We are at risk of fire, wildfires, all year long. It doesn't, it doesn't really matter. I think it used to be a couple of months in the fall, but now it's all year. So it's just a great reminder to be vigilant, to really stop and look and check on things, and have your go-bag ready to go. My friend had just moved into their home the day before the fire broke out, and they lost absolutely everything. And then four days later, she gave birth to her second child. So it just behooves us, pay attention, be prepared, and know that we're always at risk. But you guys do a great job, and I thank you for it. So, kudos.
Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
Thank you so much, Chief Hahn. You were the man. Appreciate the update. One question that I had, as you showed those beautiful Pierce Fire Engines that we purchased, are they up and running on the road now? I know there was some issues with, you know, codes and whatnot, but I know we ordered the parts, and just want to make sure that they're actually on the road being used now.
Yes.
They are?
Yes, they're in. Yeah, we had some computer programming, one computer talking to another kind of technical issue that was making lights come on, but we got that straightened.
Yeah, and I know it's not like, you know, only one company makes these fire engines. You can't go down to the dealership and get them, so, okay, well, that's great. We're glad they're out there and glad to have those in service. Thank you so much.
Okay, seeing no more questions, thank you, Chief Hahn. We appreciate the Fire Department very much here in Vista. You're number one.
Thank you.
Okay. The next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the -- Thank you, that's appreciated, I'm sure, by the Fire Department. So the recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the Clerk's secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have 10 consent items this evening, and I believe just one to be pulled, which is C-3, the Central Vista Business Improvement District Administration. And so with that, Councilmember Rigby, did you?
Yes, ma'am. I also wanted to pull C-3, but I guess a member of the public did. But I also would like to pull C-4 for discussion. And with that, I would go ahead and move that we accept the balance of the consent calendar as presented.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Then please cash your votes for the remainder of the consent calendar. That passes unanimously with Councilmember Aguilera absent. Okay, so the next thing is, we'll do C-3, the Central Vista Business Improvement District Administration, and do you want to hear the speaker first? Councilmember Rigby?
Would you like a presentation by Economic Development Director Kevin Ham?
Okay, we'll do presentation first.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Kevin Ham, Director of Economic Development, and with me is Michael Luna, our Economic Development Specialist, and he'll give a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The city received the Central Vista Business Improvement District Advisory Board its annual report, which proposed no boundary zone or assessment modifications for the upcoming fiscal year 2018-2019, which was confirmed by council on March 13th. In order to disperse funds collected by the city directly to the Vista Village Business Association, known as the VBBA, for the implementation of the CVBID, an agreement for the administration of the CVBID needs to be executed between the city and the VBBA. Per the agreement, the city will provide a supplemental grant of $20,000 in addition to any collected CVBID assessments. This will be the city's final supplemental grant to be given to the VBBA, and will end after fiscal year 2018-2019. This is based on the original request for proposal, which was awarded to the VBBA in June 2016. Upon receipt, additional assessments will be dispersed to the VBBA quarterly pending receipt of required reports, as outlined in the agreement. At the end of the fiscal year, the city will require an agreed-upon procedures review to be completed before the final dispersment of collected assessments. Neil Schaefer, the VBBA President, is available here tonight to answer any questions you may have, in addition to myself and Kevin Ham. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to hear the speaker first? Okay, Cliff Kaiser?
I've been here several times before talking about the VBBA, both in favor and some criticism, and I love the downtown, and I've loved a lot of things that the VBBA has done. Just had a great taste of Vista here a couple of weeks ago, and we're going to have a great rod run here in a couple of months, or in about a month. The challenge, however, with moving forward with this agenda item is that the VBBA made some significant errors in the past year with regards to their executive director. They hired an executive director in 2016, and sometime along the line, they engaged a contract with him that was never presented to the VBBA board. As such, the bylaws require the contract to be approved, and then when the executive director was let go just at the beginning of this year, he was given a significant severance package that the board, at the time, was misled into believing was approved by the board because of the contract. So you see the loop there? They never approved the contract, but they were told that the contract says he gets his severance package. So high was that severance package, it was more than 15% of the annual budget of the VBBA. So I have two problems with this. One is, the VBBA oftentimes, and I brought it up when I was a leader on the VBBA, I brought it up when I was with the chamber leadership, that they don't follow basic governance. They can't even read their own bylaws and follow what it says there. And then to take this amount of money that wasn't approved by the board in the contract, it's just appalling. So, is this the only incident? No. The other items that have been raised to the level of the council here, CVBID, the Business Improvement District, was formed in 1995. There was a request to disestablish it in 99. There was a request to disestablish it in '06. In 19, or in 2011, there was a change to the advisory board or the oversight board because the council was concerned with how the VBBA was being run. Just in the last five years, there's been two RFPs, whereas the previous history of the VBBA that was just awarded, those RFPs were issued because there was concern by you that something wasn't going right. So there's a history of things not running right with the VBBA. You know this, I've brought it up, others have brought it up. My concern to you is, how long are we going to go on with this continuing, repeating cycle? Even the report here that you have in your agenda report here has the November 2017 annual report, the estimate of funds and expenditures. It says we're going to get $88,000 in expenses, it says we're going to get $30,000 in grant forms from the city, where they just told us now we're getting $20,000. And we knew that back then. And then there's $13,000 left over from this fiscal year to fund next fiscal year. But we know that we just spent $20,000 out of that budget.
Wrap it up, Cliff.
So, the bottom line is, they predict that they're going to have surplus funds when they're going to be $5,000 in a hole on a report that you guys have in your package.
Cliff, we've got a long meeting today.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay. Is Neil Schaefer, do you want to speak to that? Is he here? President?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. The VBBA has undergone a lot of changes over the last six months. As Mr. Kaiser acknowledged, we did terminate the position, excuse me, of Executive Director in January. That was done to clear funds, reallocate those to places where we could use them more efficiently and see greater return. I was not on the board when the executive director was hired and retained, but I have little doubt that his contract was approved. At the very least, it was approved through ratification of the board. The board was aware of its terms, the board acted upon those terms, and worked closely with the executive director until his termination in January of this year. The severance that Mr. Kaiser spoke of was discussed and was approved by the board pursuant to his contract. He was, the position was terminated for our own purposes, to clear up money. The position was terminated, he was terminated, his employment was terminated without cause, which provided him with 90 days' notice, thus the severance that we provided him equal to 90-day pay. It seemed to follow what our contract provided, and everything we have provided has been within the bounds of our bylaws, within the bounds of the contract. The VBBA is -- The VBBA is, you know, is...understands concerns about its reputation, its image, how things may have been managed. And, you know, I can stand here and say, we're going to see a dramatic increase in revenue, we're going to see a dramatic increase in sponsorship, but I also understand that you're looking for results. Even though those things are true, and I'm certain of that, you expect results from us. And, you know, and since I became President, it's been about two weeks, you know, it's...there aren't a lot of results we can point to yet. But our board has been working hard, and I'm joined by a few members of my board here today, Roddy Browning, Terry Little, and Natalie Trevino, business owners in the downtown Vista area. And I think Taste of Vista is just one area I can highlight that has shown the real progress the Vista Village Business Association has made and will continue to make. We took steps to improve the efficiency and organization and operation of that event. Last year, we sold a little over 500 tickets. This year, we hit 748, including 223 day-of. We had a modest net income last year, dramatic increase this year for a net income of $15,717. These are significant upgrades, and that's because of increased, I would say, increased reflection by the board, learning not only from, you know, past challenges, but also what has worked well for our board. And we are energized and committed. We have, you know, five new wonderful board members. We had a retreat last Thursday to really set our goals for the year, put everything on a positive and determined foot in order to achieve those goals. You know, we have a lot more plans for the future as well, including what I think is going to be a real benefit for all of Vista, which is a brand-new website and design campaign surrounding that. We've engaged a company to do that, had a presentation last week at our retreat, and it's going to be very impressive. Not only will it support our...the bid area, but I think it will help all of Vista. This is a, you know, rising tide lifts all boats situation. You know, I'll stop there, and I welcome any questions from the council, but, you know, I assure you, and I know very much, that the board is headed, and the organization as a whole, is headed in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll leave it to Councilmember Rigby, and then maybe she'll have a question, and we'll see. Okay, Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, I appreciate your comments, Neil, very much. But we've been here before. We have...the board has gone through a significant change in membership recently, and this happens every year, every couple of years, where it's a significant shakeup for one reason or another. We've recently been receiving numerous emails from different board members regarding the ongoing issues with the Board of Directors for the VBBA, and there seems to be some infighting on the board, which is not unusual. I don't understand...sometimes it almost seems to me like the VBBA itself has just got a dark cloud over it, because this has been going on for many, many, many years. Not only the infighting amongst the board members, events have been canceled, there seems to be a revolving door in the Executive Director's office, and currently, I think in the last five years, there have been three executive directors, and in the last six months, you've been without an executive director. That presents a problem, not having somebody in that position who can do the job that's expected of the VBBA in administering and implementing the programs and the activities for the business district. And I understand that currently, the board wants to take all of that on themselves, but you also are all working full-time in your own businesses. So I don't see the current iteration of the Vista Village Business Association Board of Directors having a cohesive vision for what they want downtown. And I love downtown, and I've been here a very, very long time, and I remember when downtown wasn't anything to go to. There wasn't anything there, the buildings were boarded up. I remember the tennis racket restringer, but he was the only one down there. So there has been a lot of positive changes in our downtown area, and if we want to continue with those changes, and we want our downtown to not be a place that people bump into, but to make it the true destination that it can be and it should be, I really think that we need to look at a change. And I've had this conversation here before, this isn't new to anybody who's come to these meetings and has paid any attention to it. So I am not convinced that the Board of Directors and its current iteration, if there were to be a vision that could be agreed on, I'm not sure the current iteration of the Board of Directors would be able to implement that vision. And we are currently in the third year of the third contract, or of a three-year contract, and this is scheduled, if I'm not mistaken, we are to revisit this in January to put an RFP out. Am I correct?
We hadn't talked about that, but that's something that we can do.
Well, I was under the impression that we were going to be doing this in a few months anyway. So I actually do not support this agenda item in approving the agreement for the VBBA to administer and implement for the CVBID. And what I'd like to do is move that timeline ahead to now, and put the RFP out now for it, and not wait until January. I appreciate the comments, the concerns, I appreciate your being here to witness this discussion or be part of the discussion, but as I've said, we've had this...this has been ongoing for many years, and I don't see anything changing. Even though the board has changed multiple times, the executive directors have changed multiple times, the issues have not resolved. So I'm ready for this to go out to an RFP at this point. And if that needs to be in the manner of a motion, Mr. City Attorney, I will make that a motion.
I'll turn over just a second, but I'm personally not willing to end that contract. We have a whole new board. I'm willing to give them a chance to see what they can do out there. The people on the board are the new businesses, a lot of the new businesses that they are serving the downtown, they're willing to help their downtown. The downtown is actually the window to our whole city, and so it's so important. So I'm not willing to end the contract, and I'm supporting this. So I will go to Councilmember Franklin.
Madam Mayor, I agree with your sentiments, particularly because I see the faces of some of the business owners who've recently invested in the downtown, who have not been a part of the past operation of the VBBA. And I agree, I mean, the problems that have been pointed out are frustrating, but I do appreciate about the VBBA that it brings our downtown business owners together, creates an environment for them to attempt to work cooperatively for the better interest of our downtown. But I'd agree with Councilwoman Rigby in that I will...at this exact moment in time, I'm supportive of the ramp-down. And one of the things, and this has been something I've been...a point I've been making for four years, is I'm not sure that we've genuinely given the bid pairs...right now, it's a Herculean task to opt out of the bid. In other words, there's no opt-out, I'm sorry, that's the wrong language, to end the bid would require a Herculean effort, because it's really a process where the business owners would have to come together and all vote no, and there's no organization for that. I think it should be a...I think they should reaffirm it from time to time. I don't know if that's every 10 years or every 20 years, but at some point, I think the business owners ought to have a right to ask the question, you know, do we want to end this thing? Do we like it just the way it is? Want to keep going? Or do we want to double the scope and size of it? I mean, maybe that's the right thing to do. We looked at that a couple of years ago and said, you know, do we want to kind of really kick-start this thing and do more with it? And the kind of resounding answer that came back to us was, no, we're happy with it the way it is. And if that continues to be the sentiment, I think there has been enough demonstrated results. I want to congratulate you on your increased revenues. That's excellent. I hope that you're able to continue that. I know what a challenge it is to run an organization like this. And I just want to say, on behalf of the city and your neighbors in Vista, thank you for all the volunteer hours that you put in, because we know that this wouldn't happen without you, and we know that volunteering to serve your community is often a thankless job. So I just appreciate what you're doing for the city, not only on VBBA, but also thank you for building businesses in this city and, you know, building jobs here and investing your life savings in many cases, and taking a risk on this city. Thank you very much for what you do for us.
Councilmember Green?
Thank you so much, Neil, and thank you for the presentation staff as well. I am actually the council member assigned to the VBBA, and I try not to miss a VBBA meeting, whether it's an executive meeting or just a regular meeting, just because I want to know what's going on. As a Vista, and I never even really knew what the VBBA did, and come to find out, they do get a lot of money, and they are supposed to be improving that business district for business owners. Over the years, we have had a lot of issues, but over the last year that I've been sitting on this board, I have watched it change dramatically. I think getting rid of the executive director with the high salary they were paying based off of their budget was a fantastic move. I believe that allows them to allocate their funds towards more effective marketing for the business owners in that area. And inevitably, that's what the CVBID is all about, is pumping money into the area to make us have successful businesses that are going to be sustainable. And that sustainability, I think, is what all of us are concerned with at the council level. Not having an effective executive director right now means that you, as business owners, are having to volunteer, which I appreciate. I just don't know how sustainable that is. So I know you guys have a plan to implement something. There's some very smart business owners that are on this board now. I've spoken with you guys individually, I've also spoken with you as a group. I want to let my council know that I had a what-the-heck meeting with the VBBA, because after the president resigned, it was in disarray. And we do pump a lot of money into this organization, so I sat down with them for a little over an hour, I listened to their vision, I've sat through the presentations of the internet company that they've hired to do the marketing, and I really do feel like we're on the right path. This year is going to be a telling year for the VBBA, because we've made a lot of changes, and you're making a lot of commitments and a lot of promises. The fruits of your labor are already showing, great job, but know, you know, this time next year, we're going to want to see a lot out of you guys in order to keep this going, because our business owners, you guys as business owners, want to see results. And if we can't make this happen as a volunteer organization, we want to work with you guys as business owners and say, hey, what's the best way to spend this money to make sure that that district is successful, your businesses are successful, and you stay in our city? So know that we're not trying to punish you at all, we just want to say, hey, we're on the team with you guys, we want these businesses to be successful, we want the VBBA to be successful. But we do want to see results, and I do appreciate all that you're doing. So I am on the same page as the mayor and Councilmember Franklin, that I do support this item, and I would move to make a motion to approve the item as presented and move on.
I'll second that motion. So seeing no further speakers, then I will ask you to cast your votes. That motion passes 3 to 1, and with one excused absence. So moving on to item consent, item number four, North County Dispatch JPA Calpers Unfunded Accrued Liability. And do you need a report on that? Councilmember?
No, Madam Mayor, I don't think we need a report on it particularly. I'm going to read a little bit from the agenda report. This item, C4, is regarding the North County Dispatch JPA, the Joint Powers Authority, unfunded accrued liability. And I just wanted to make a comment. First of all, the North County Dispatch JPA provides fire and emergency medical response dispatch services to most fire agencies in North County, including Vista. The services include answering 911 calls, emergency and business phone calls, providing emergency medical dispatch instructions, like if you call and you have an emergency and you're waiting for the paramedics to get there, and they're providing you with technical assistance for you to support your person before they get there, a lot of other services. And as we've mentioned before, Vista is a very busy city, and we're one of the busiest member agencies of this JPA. But it's important to know that the JPA employees are members of Calpers, which is the pension that public employees are part of. And the North County JPA has had a Calpers unfunded liability of $404,818. And this agenda item is for us to pay that off in its entirety for our member agency of what we owe. And I just want to say, I think this is spectacular, because a few years ago, a few short years ago, we were not in the financial position that we could have done this, that we could have paid off this liability. But because of the decisions that we've made as a city, and you, as a community, have supported those decisions and the things that we have done, we have done what we promised we would do, and we've put our city back on solid financial footing, and we are able to pay off this liability. So I'm very, very proud of that, and I pulled this item from the agenda just so that I could share that with you, so that it didn't go unnoticed that we were in this position and that we were doing this, because this is a very good thing. So, Madam Mayor, with that, I would like to move that we approve item C4 as it's presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Seeing other speakers, I'll please ask you to cast your votes. That item passes unanimously with one excused absence.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Would the council be interested in...I think there's a lot of speakers for item D1, and maybe not as many for D2. Would we...would it please you to take the items out of order?
It's okay, Neil, what do you think, council? I see these heads shaking one way or another. Don't care? It's okay? Okay? Okay, okay, we can do that. We'll do that, we're going to take...we'll take D2, and then that should not take as long as D1 will. So we'll go into D2. That's a proposed general plan amendment and zone change at 890 East Vista Way. Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley is going to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposal for a general plan amendment and zone change at 890 East Vista Way. Discussion regard...in regards to two parcels, which are located on the north side of East Vista Way between Francis Drive and Anza Avenue, shown here on the overhead. It's about one acre, two legal parcels. The site is currently designated for commercial neighborhood use, which is general commercial uses in our general plan, and the zoning designation is C1, which allows for retail and office and associated commercial uses. The site's been operated as a 40-bed transitional homeless shelter between 2005 and just at the beginning of last year, that shelter was closed. The owner is Solutions for Change, which is the applicant behind the proposal, who also ran the previous shelter on the property. The surrounding uses are shown here, residential to the north and northwest, and commercial uses to the west, east, and south of the site. So the property owner is Solutions for Change. He's submitted a preliminary proposal to develop the site with a three-story mixed-use development. That would consist of office space, a 14-bed empowerment center, which would be for families transitioning from homelessness, a kitchen, restrooms, and covered parking on the first floor, and 34 affordable residential units on the second and third floors. The proposed use that they've submitted would not be consistent with our general plan or zoning, and it would require a zone change. The proposed use that they're asking for is mixed-use. So those decisions are at the discretion of the city council, and per policy, we bring those for you to discussion before we accept an application. The overhead here shows the current general plan designation on the left, which is commercial neighborhood. The designation above it is medium-low density, which is a single-family residential zone. The orange is medium-high density, which is a multifamily zone. On the right is the commercial...I'm sorry, the zoning designation, which is shown as C1 Commercial, and the surrounding zoning in pink is also commercial with R1 Residential to the north. The requested...the request before us this evening for application is to change it to mixed-use, which is a purple designation that's shown here. The applicant has submitted a site plan for the council's information. This is not an application that's pending before the city tonight, but to give you some idea of what their intent to do with the property was provided in your packet, it shows the first-floor layout on the left there, which would be office space, the empowerment center, and some covered parking. And on the right is the layout for the second and third floors for the 34 residential units with an interior courtyard on the second story. There are also some architectural perspectives that are included in the packet, which are shown here, giving perspectives of the building from the street, which is the upper-left-hand corner, from the properties behind to the northeast, which is the lower-left-hand corner, from the street just looking to the east, which is in the upper-right-hand corner, and from the street looking to the west, which is the lower-right-hand corner. These are artist perspectives of what the building would look like with the current design. So as I mentioned, general plan amendments and zone change requests are at the discretion of the council, following a formal recommendation by the Planning Commission. Staff brings all such requests before the council for discussion prior to accepting a formal application. So we have posted notice of this discussion item on the site and sent out notice to all of the property owners within 500 feet of the property 10 days prior to the meeting. With that, staff is requesting direction from the city council related to acceptance of a formal application for this project. The council may accept... The council may accept or reject the application or request additional information prior to providing staff direction related to this item. And that completes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I have, um, speakers. Who do you want to go first, you guys?
No, listen.
Yeah, speakers first? Okay. Okay. Um, the first speaker is, um, looks like Michelle from, Michelle here? Oh, there you go. Okay. And she, and I'm going to have everybody, when I call speakers, I'll call, I'll call three, and then one, if one, I'll call one, and then if the other two will line up over here, it will make things a little easier. The second would be, uh, Leanne Twig, or Twiggy, and Jennifer Pankey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. Um, I'm not, I've only been, uh, apprised of this new development in the last day. So, uh, we happen to be the owners of the parking lot on the C1, and apparently, uh, the people that were developing the corner lot, um, are unable to get it filled because of this proposition. So, I think we need more information on what is going to be allowed there in order for us to then give prospective tenants information as to what's next door and what they can expect for their customers.
Are you talking about the, the new place that they've been redeveloping there in the corner? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Um, apparent, I, I'm not sure of the entire situation, but, uh, like I said, I was just apprised of this yesterday. So, um, my understanding is, though, that the deal has fallen through, which means that the deal falls through for us as well. So, it's, um, I'd like to have a lot more information about it. I come from a small town that has a large homeless problem, and I'm very sympathetic to that situation. I just haven't found that having a homeless shelter right in the middle of the town is the best idea. Um, it just hasn't worked in my little town, and, uh, it's kind of, maybe in a different area would be better, is my concern for the businesses in that area.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Leanne Twig, is it Twiggy?
Twig.
Twig, okay. Twig, followed by Jennifer Pankey. Um, it should be followed by Jeff Hill.
Hi, I'm Leanne Twig, and I'm a member of Solutions For Change. I've been there for about a year, and I've never been as successful as I am now. I was once homeless. When I came to Solutions For Change, I had a pair of flip-flops, a pair of jeans, and two shirts. I didn't even have shoes to go to the work on the farm, and now I have a full-time job. I've bought a car. I have a place for my son and I. All my debt is completely paid. I have savings. I have a 401K plan, you know, and I have 14 days vacation on, in my job, you know? I'm so proud of what, of what Solutions For Change has done for me and has transformed my life. And, you know, there are probably about 500 homeless families in the North County that are waiting to get into our program. So, this is just going to chunk away, just a small chunk for the families that, you know, can have the same life that Solutions For Change has given to me. So, I'll please vote yes for this. I think it's a great program, and it's really transformed my life.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Okay, we're not, we can't clap between all the things, or we'll never get through this meeting tonight. So, no, no clapping. If you start clapping, we're going to take a break, and then we'll think about it. So, um, Jeff Hill is next, followed by Killar and Woolley.
Jennifer Pankey.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer Pankey. Oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer. I laid your thing down. Followed by Jeff Hill, followed by Killar and Woolley.
Good evening. Good evening. I haven't really prepared anything to say or to compel or beg or, or anything like that. I just wanted to, um, thank you for being leaders of the city. I know that each of you know that, um, the importance of what we do and why we do it. Um, I would encourage the community with any questions about anything that we're doing to come. We're an open book. Um, we would love to have you, and, um, I just really appreciate your guys' time. I didn't know we were going to be seen this early. I thought it was going to be way later, but I really appreciate being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jeff Hill, followed by Killar and Woolley, followed by Larry Mercy.
Hello, my name is Jeff. Solutions For Change, uh, not from that program, but, uh, one thing I can say about that, I know a lot of people that, uh, um, went through that program, and it saved their lives. Uh, one thing that I noticed that the program does is it focuses on children and, um, you know, and the lives that the children get to participate in with their, with their parents being in their lives is, is one key thing. That's one thing that, um, people that go into that program struggle when they're out on the streets. They can't, uh, find their way to live life on life's terms, you know? And, uh, building a facility like this, uh, within the heart of Vista would be a benefit, um, to help families like that and children. That's the key. Like, that's one thing that I noticed that Solutions For Change really focuses on is the children and, uh, you know, getting the children off the streets. So, yeah, I wish you'd vote, uh, yes to this. I mean, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Killar and Woolley, followed by Larry Mercy, followed by Brooks Kavanaugh.
Hi, my name is Killar and Woolley. I've been in the program for over six years now, and I just want to say that if it wasn't for Solutions, I don't know where I would be today. When I came in, I was, um, lost, lost, didn't have any kind of, um, goals in my life, and I can say that I went back to school. Um, I work for the mental health system now. I'm helping people, um, get back on their feet as well, and my daughter is happy, and we're thriving, and I don't, and everybody that I came in with, we all have turned into total different people, and without Solutions For Change, I don't, like I said, I don't know where I would be. And I changed everything, and a lot of people see that, working with us and everybody in, in the program. It's just a whole different program than any other programs. You start from ground zero, and you start, you build your way back up, you know, because a lot of us come in lonely, empty, lost, and, and I can say that I came in with a hole, and now I'm filled, and now I'm helping other people like myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Larry Mercy? Take a break. Followed by Brooks Kavanaugh, followed by Victoria Estep.
Hi, my name is Larry, and I, these people, they're right. Solutions For Change has done well with this. He's done very well in this city. When, when Chris came to Vista 12 to 13 years ago, was to buy a beat-up old commercial building located downtown Vista in front of residential homes. Zone C1, he proposed to city council, let's see if we can get a special use permit. I would like to build a homeless transitional center for women and kids. City approved permit 10, 11 years ago. So, we've had a shelter down below my house with no problems.
Hey, Larry, will you speak right on your microphone so it's a little louder? Yeah, that'd be good. Thanks.
I have never complained about it. Since then, he has built apartments on California Street in Vista, apartments on Postal Way, hydroponics on La Brea Road, and done very well with each project that I know about. Coming back to East Vista Way, we have a special use permit, C1. Now, he wants to go from existing general plan and zoning designation that does not permit mixed-use residential development or a homeless shelter. He wants all three. He wants 23-bedroom apartments, 14 two-bedroom apartments, 14 beds for families transitioning from homelessness, also wants office space for added income. Lot size is tad under one acre and will require major grading, among other things. The three property lines he wants to grade to will have concrete retaining walls around total perimeter except East Vista Way. At my house, behind project, wall will drop 18 feet to ground level behind my fence. The project will go 22-foot above that. Me, my wife and kids, and grandkids have lived here for almost 40 years. I do not want to be looking into a two-second and third-story apartment complex in back of building that will totally take away all my view of East Vista Way and the foothills and trees of Vista. We do every holiday at our house for my mother, my brothers, my kids, and grandkids, and I don't want strangers looking into my backyard while we are swimming in the pool. Just too big of a project for that lot. Rethink, replan, resubmit. Rent? My house is built in 1925 in its original Rancho Buena Vista home owned by Cave and Ysidra Coats in the 1920s. Let us keep the view they had when the stagecoaches stopped up here to visit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Okay, Brooks Kavanaugh, followed by Victoria Estep, followed by Matthew Mooney.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. For the record, Brooks Kavanaugh, land consultant with about, uh, 40 years in this wonderful community. I'm speaking on behalf of the owner of the Vista Way Cafe at 868 East Vista Way. So, it's the corner cutout adjacent. Most of you know where that is. And that's the Geisler Family Trust, and we recognize that name as longstanding in the community. We're not here to discuss or in any way impugn the wonderful program of Operation, of, I started to say Operation Hope, that's another good one, but...
That's the other one.
That's across the street, but, uh, no, of, uh, Solutions For Change. In fact, uh, I helped them in the farm out in the county and, um, and have worked with them since the beginning, and it's, it's a welcome, notable, important work in our community. But what I'm here about, and what my client is concerned about, is that, um, the proposed project exceeds reasonable bulk standards for a building in this neighborhood. If you look at the floor ratio, ground parking, once you arrive, fine, you go up, you may live there, you may do business there. I've read the staff report. It's sufficient to suggest to me that that's the, that's the wrong location for the amount of coverage being proposed. And my client is extremely concerned that when you apply the MU zone, you impose residential setbacks on their remaining parking and operation of a restaurant. Hopefully, in time, the restaurant will recycle and, uh, something else will replace it. But as I drove by there today twice and looked at the massiveness, and you look at what was presented to you, uh, the profile of, of this building along that frontage between the new remodeled bank and the restaurant with an opening to, to serve people that would need to drive in. So, I ask you the question. I want to go visit this structure. It's built. Where do I park? Well, my, uh, one of the other concerns I express is that my client's concerned that our parking will be, uh, abused because there's, I don't see any outside surface parking. Now, I'll give you an example. Go over, I was involved with, and I'll wrap it up, uh, over the parking structure on Williamston. At least when you go to that facility, there's outside parking, and then, if you need to, you can park in the tunnel.
Okay.
So, our concern is that it's excessive of...
Got it, Brooks. I need to, I need to move you along here.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay. Our next speaker is Victoria Estep, and it's, and Matthew Mooney and, um, Viva Thornburg, they, um, actually are supportive of Solutions For Change, but they don't want to speak. So, then the next speaker after Victoria will be Chris Meggason.
Good evening, Vista City Council. My name is Victoria, and I have been in the Solutions For Change program for a little over two years. I must say that when I started my transformation in this program, it was at 890 East Vista Way. And as Leanne said, there are about 500 people in our waitlist who are deserving of this chance that I was given to transform my life and become a better mother, better person, better daughter, and a productive member of society. Um, I know this would be, or this would mean a great deal to the other residents that are on the waitlist and that's in the program for this, um, proposition to be approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Chris Meggason?
Good evening, mayor. I wasn't sure if there would be an opportunity for an agency presentation, but, um, so we're available for that if the council wants that, but, uh, in lieu of that, I just have a couple of minutes here. What's the pleasure of the council?
Wait, what was the question?
An agency presentation, uh, where we're just...
Do you have a presentation on this? Okay.
I think our agenda report is sufficient.
Is, I, I see one yes and one no, and that's...
Either way.
Um, but, what, is it, is it the same as what we have? We just, our presentation we just got from, from planning?
Well, I think what we, I have my development team here, and because this is a land use issue, I thought that it might benefit the council to, uh, have my, um, my partner here to, to describe the design of land use.
You can do that if you just make it brief.
Okay.
How's that?
That's good. Well, my part's brief, and then I'll ask him to come up, and he'll be brief as well.
Okay.
So, uh, good evening, mayor, and, and members of the council. You know that over the last 27 years, uh, my wife Tammy and I have connected with thousands of Vistons here on a ministry mission to revolutionize the way that we see and act on this perplexing and complex, complex issue of homelessness. You know, back 27 years ago, when we started this journey, we never envisioned that our efforts started right here. Were turned into a regional and now a national movement to lift up those struggling in deep poverty. And I want to believe that that has come from the heart and the minds of Vistons who, uh, not only care, but are leaders in this effort here to truly transform lives. And so, since starting this calling in 92, we've designed, built, and delivered a series of programs that transform the formerly homeless from consumers of the public good to being and serving as the public good. And when people ask us, we don't say that we help the homeless. We say that we're, we're in the transformation business, and I know you know a lot about this, about our programs, and I know we're not here to discuss the merits of the programs. Um, and I, and I do also know that, you know that we're not here tonight requesting any funds from the city, but instead, we're, we're here to receive your feedback and your guidance to replace and transform a vital asset to the community. It's a 70-year-old property on East Vista Way, but really, most importantly, we've, we've been in partnership with the city this whole time, and I, and I, you've heard me say thank you many times, but you're going to hear me say it again tonight. Thank you to this council and to the many who've served on this dais before you that have, that have allowed us to serve the people of this community that are the, the least, the lost, the most hurting of this community. And because you've taken some chances on us in the past, that has, that investment has resulted in many, many lives transformed, and you're seeing some of them here tonight. I didn't want to overwhelm you, but when we put the word out that we were here, so many of them wanted to show up. And so, um, we, we have a chance at winning the one other remaining housing funding option that this organization has, because as you've heard, we no longer can qualify for federal or state money because we don't do, uh, housing first. So, the one other available option for Vista homeless kids and families who want to live in drug-free housing and who want to get up and suit up and show up and go to work, we have that application pending right now with the County of San Diego through their Innovative Housing Trust Fund. And we're, we're asking that, that we're allowed to continue this conversation with you, this opportunity with you, uh, because if, if we walk out of here tonight, and this is not a project here that you want us to continue to partner with, we, we will, uh, lose that last option of that money from the County of San Diego, who wants to invest in something that's innovative and that's drug-free and that encourages people to work. So, we, we would really appreciate this opportunity to continue. Maybe there's, I'm sure there's a lot of input, some things that we can change, some things that we can do differently. We're willing to do that. We've always been your partner. We, we want to continue that partnership. This is never was meant to be something that we, we, we want to do without your partnership, and we hope that you give us that opportunity here to continue, uh, to serve Vista and, and really lift the, the folks that are in our community, those ones that are, um, that are in the deepest of poverty with their kids up and out. And, and we just, we, we just want to continue with this partnership, and we hope that this is an opportunity here, that we can do that here. But if not, uh, with the current design, we are more than happy to, to, to listen and change it. And I did bring my, um, my development partner, William Leach from Kingdom Development, and he'll take a few minutes and just describe some of the design features and, and the issues related to... related to land use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable City Council Members. I'm blessed to be a solutionizer, to help come in and make a transformational effort in the families, more on the financing side, more on the nerdy spreadsheet side. And I really appreciate your consideration. The staff report does talk a lot about what is being requested and the people have talked about, a lot about the impact that it'll do. Chris mentioned the trying to bring forward resources from the federal government, from the county into the city of Vista to help make this happen. And in your allowance of us to submit an application, it will help us continue to go forward with those funding, we would make a commitment that any architectural changes, feedback, parking ratios, setbacks, sightlines, we have an expert team of architects and engineers that can help with those issues. And if allowed to apply, we would be happy to work with the staff and the planning commission to make sure that it's a sensitive development to the folks around it. And we have folks here, if you have questions, thank you.
Okay, okay. If you have a seat and then if they have questions, I'll call you back up, how's that? So I'll start with Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you. First, I just want to say what a great program Solutions for Change is. And I've been privileged over the years to hear from numerous people who've been through the program and whose lives have been changed by it in very meaningful ways. And I want to say how supportive that I am of the concept of the project and of the model that Chris and his team have built and that I want to see them be able to expand that model and grow it. My understanding is staff's looking for just a direction from council tonight. So what I want to say is, and I visited the site with Chris, I do think that there are some challenges with the design as proposed, but Chris has also demonstrated a willingness to work with us on that. I'm not convinced that the massing and the height and some other issues, parking, there's a lot of really important issues, but just that we're all on the same page, this design review is intended to, you know, give developers a direction, a sense of where we're at on the basic concept. All are welcome to submit their development proposals, but we like to give this design review as an opportunity for developers to understand the risk that they might incur in going forward. So with that, and I also want to say, and I met with staff privately and relayed some of these ideas to Chris, is Chris still with us?
Yeah.
The, we talked about the idea of potentially leveraging the land that you have here to maybe find another location. I want to explore those ideas with you because I think, and staff seemed open to some great ideas, love to sit down more. And I think there may even be an opportunity here to build the perfect thing and the perfect location. But I understand that what you need right now is an invitation from the council to make your application. But in this design review process, this is where we want to give our honest initial feedback. So for me, I would invite you to make the proposal, just in the spirit that we discussed, that you're willing to work with us to make some changes and that you're willing to be totally open to a potential even for a change of location, if that makes this thing really work right, so.
Okay, I have two more speakers and we put this forward earlier. Do you want to go ahead and take these two? Okay. Erica Rodriguez and then followed by Alicia Campbell. Are they here? Erica?
Yeah.
Okay, come on down, Erica. And then followed by Alicia Campbell.
I apologize.
Thanks.
Good afternoon and good evening, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I just want to say thank you to all of you for taking the time to hear us out this evening. I just want to let you know that I am currently a resident at Solutions University. I'm pretty new in the program. I was homeless for quite some time and I'll tell you that I really forgot how to live on my own and really just be responsible. And I have a five-year-old daughter and I was currently a resident also at the 890 shelter. And regardless of our situation, we were able to come together there with the foundation that they help us with, you know? I feel like a child who's learning to walk again. And Solutions for Change is like the caring parent who's trusting in me and putting their hand out to help me again. And I am tremendously grateful for Solutions for Change and I'm just here to say that I want to see this happen so they can help many more families like myself. So thank you all, that's all I have.
Thank you. Alicia?
Hi, good evening. I wanted to say that Solutions for Change has worked in transporting hundreds of our lives. It's currently helping transform my life as well as many of my friends. And the building on East Vista Way is a 70-year-old building. And redeveloping that building would enable Solutions for Change to help hundreds of other residents in North County. And, you know, I help at the front desk and I get phone calls every day and hear of families in need with children. And, you know, the change that has happened in myself and in others around me is absolutely a miracle and I am truly grateful for this program. And I would love to see Solutions for Change able to house hundreds of more families and help others in the community. And I appreciate your guys' partnership with Solutions for Change and I hope that you will continue to support them and the transformation of others' lives.
Thank you. Okay, back to Councilmember Franklin, you were through, right?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is absolutely no doubt the good work that Solutions for Change does and the way they change lives and the good that they do for the community as a whole, as well as to the individuals that they have in their community. And I applaud and I support Chris and your program and what you do. And I've been to your facilities, I think I've visited all of your facilities, I think, and your farm. And you have done an outstanding job. And I was just there yesterday visiting with them. And I know firsthand and have had firsthand experience with them and their clients. And I am absolutely supportive of the program, but not in this location. I have to agree with Mr. Kavanaugh that there are some serious concerns with the way that this would work on this lot. But aside from just the concerns that we have about that particular issue, there also obviously are some things about the surrounding neighbors, the surrounding issue, tenants and properties that I'm not familiar with. And I think I'd like to be more familiar with that and I'd like to know what's going on in those surrounding properties. And I appreciate very much that we had the two speakers come and talk to us, but I'd like to know more about what those concerns are. And the other thing that we talk about, and we, I talked about this a little bit earlier, was about the vision that we have and with respect to the previous agenda item. In our community, our city, we have a vision for what we want our community to be and how we want to plan it and how we want to grow it. And it's called our general plan. And we just redid our general plan just not too long ago with a lot of community input, with town hall meetings, multiple meetings, community meetings, going around to all the different neighborhoods for months and months, getting together with all of our fellow Vistaans to have a conversation about what we wanted for our community. This does not comply with our general plan, which is why they're asking for us to amend the general plan and to also do a change in the zoning. And I am not in favor of a general plan amendment nor a zoning change because that flies in the face of what our community told us they want for this area. I also, like I said, I have serious concerns about this project in this location, as well as some of the details of the project in itself. So with that, I would not be supportive of this application going forward here. But I would be interested in hearing if there was another location that we could work with you on. And also, I'm interested to see what the county is going to do with the application that you have on the county level. So that's my position on this. But I, again, you know I support what you're doing very, very much.
Councilmember Green.
All right, well, I think I basically need to echo what both my other council members say is I definitely appreciate Solutions for Change and all that you do and all the lives that you've changed. I think that the people who show up for you are a testament to what you've done in the community, so I definitely applaud you for that. I've met with you, I've talked to you about this project more than once. And for the design aspect of it, I know you say you'll be able to change the design here and there, but I've never heard any design going down to a two-story design. And this looks like a pretty heavy three-story building at several different areas. And according to Larry, who I'm assuming probably lives on Smith Drive, which backs right up to that property right there, I've been to several Fourth of July parties on Smith Drive because it's one of the best spots to watch the fireworks from. And I couldn't imagine having a property since 1925 and looking at your backyard at this monstrosity. So I am not supportive of this property, this project, this design in this location. I do know the need for it, I do know the lives that you could change, but I really feel like it needs to be in a different location or some major, major design changes need to happen that I don't know if will be doable, because I've already requested what I think is doable and it's not in front of me right here. So from my perspective, I definitely support Solutions for Change. I support being able to house more people with your program, but I definitely do not support this project with this design in this particular location, unfortunately. You know, both of my councilmembers both have great things to say, you know, what we could do with it. Definitely in another location, I'm going to be much more susceptible to approving it. But right there on East Vista Way, affecting all those residents, affecting the Geisler property, it's a no-go for me. So there's my feedback.
Okay, and I would say, I also supportive of Solutions for Change. I see a lot of success stories come out of there and they do an amazing job with everyone and they do have a waiting list. But on this location, I think that's too dense a project or too tall. Three stories, I think, is too much. So I'd like to have you, maybe have Chris work with someone else and maybe a different, maybe you could sell this and put that money in a different property or work with our city and see if they have an idea for you that maybe we could come up with a different answer for that. But I don't, I think that's just too much for that piece of property there, so. So I guess we just, Councilmember Franklin, did you want?
Could I just offer one final thought?
Sure, sure.
In my conversations with the city manager, we explored some inventive ideas to perhaps propose to the council. I haven't had a chance to go back and visit with Chris or the team at Solutions about this yet, but one of the ideas that I came up with, Mr. Johnson modified into a kind of a supposal, which was what if we provided from the housing fund a loan that was collateralized by this property and that would enable immediate funding for a parcel that would be suitable? And then at which point the property is sold, the subject parcel on 890 Vista Way, the city would recover most, if not all, of its investment. And so could be a financial partner in helping something. It's just an option. I don't know if my colleagues in the council would embrace that idea, but we want to think creatively about how we can be a partner and help and really be a part of this vision and make it happen. So, and with that, I would just say, I've heard my colleagues' comments and it just, you know, the, because I don't think we're, I don't think there's a motion on the table, so.
And they don't need a motion, they just want to provide direction, so.
Right, so I just wanted to make that point, that we're not making a formal finding right now. And you're, this is guidance for you and your application is still lawfully entitled to be received. You do have the ability to move forward with an application, even if the council gives you advice that they might not ultimately approve it. But that's the idea here, is to give you an upfront picture of where the opinions are at right now. So I just wanted to close with that.
I would support you on that, I agree with that. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you. I would actually support exploring options as well. I absolutely do support solutions and what you do. And I think this is kind of what we talk about a lot. We talk about public-private partnerships, because that's how a lot of the things for our community gets done, is through the partnerships. And I think this is a great partnership, just not here. So I am open to exploring other options and other opportunities.
Councilmember Green.
I was just going to echo that sentiment as well. I would be open to exploring other possibilities. I definitely don't mind working with them to make something happen, but this particular location is definitely not the right one for me. And if it's not going to be too big of a financial setback for the city and it's something we can partner with and it'd be a benefit for our citizens and our town, I definitely look at it, so hopefully that helps.
So, Mr. Conley, do you have enough direction from our city or do you need more?
Well, it looks like there's no support for a general plan change, so I believe I have sufficient direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So with that, we will move on to our, back to our first discussion item, which is D1, which is the California Values Act. And so, Councilmembers Franklin and Rigby asked for this item to be put on the agenda, so I'm going to ask Councilmember Franklin to introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think most of us in this state of California are familiar with the California Values Act, also known as SB 54. Definitely an item of contention in our community, as evidenced by the number of citizens who've come tonight. I want to thank all of you for being with us this evening, to come and to be heard. We want to engage in a respectful dialogue and we'll listen carefully to your comments and would ask that you be respectful of our process and of our chambers and of your city government. And once you've had an opportunity to be heard, that you not distract other speakers. And with that, I'd like to hear what the community has to say about the California Values Act.
Okay, we have 50 speakers tonight. And so, please be respectful. We have three minutes each and to get through these speakers, that's at least, that's about two hours worth of speakers, so just so you know that. So I'll ask you, I'll do the same thing. I'm going to call three names, I'll call one, if the other two would get up and wait over there, that will make it a little quicker. And we'll be respectful of you and then when it's our turn to talk, we expect you to be respectful of us. So starting out here, we're going to go start out with Noel Breen, followed by Frank Painter, followed by Beth Hastings. So looking for Noel. Noel, Noel?
Yeah, it's fine.
Are you Noel?
Yeah, I'm Noel.
Okay, okay.
Hi. Yeah, thank you very much for having me. I both work and worship in Vista. I enjoy my time in this community. The reason I came to speak to you folks tonight is I oppose any move to unravel SB 54 on the level of inducing cities and counties to file amicus or friend of the court briefs against this to join a lawsuit that's already been waged. And frankly, other lawsuits are already being to the point where they won't even be accepting appellate briefs for maybe a year. SB 54 is common sense legislation. It's approved by Sheriff Gore. There's a lot of people who are going to go over and say that this is about law enforcement and making the job of law enforcement easier. It is not. It actually confuses the issue. SB 54 provides a voluminous list of crimes that law enforcement can partner with immigration upon if it's committed by anybody who's residing in our society, not just immigrants. There's a whole bunch of people out there right now who want to go and engage city governments and what's primarily a federal concern. What's more, they seek to use public safety as an argument to frankly divide us against each other on a matter that sooner or later is going to be resolved by the Supreme Court of the United States, whether or not we, our communities, weigh in on it or not. I plead with the council to please go over and adopt common sense and take a look at what this is really about, which is injecting a city opinion into a federal matter in a case that's already being litigated in the federal courts. And the group fair that's asking you to do this wants you to file an amicus brief that won't even be accepted for maybe even a year. I don't think it's a great deal for anybody and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Frank Painter and I see Beth Hastings is declining to speak.
won't even be accepted for maybe even a year. I don't think it's a great deal for anybody, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Frank Painter, and I see Beth Hastings is declining to speak, so then the next one after her is Lauren Cornet.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Frank Painter, and I've been a City of Vista resident for about six years in zip code 92084. Today, I stand in support of the California Values Act. I stand with Sheriff Gore, who strongly supports SB 54, and I stand against any effort to create fear or to destroy the trust between the people and our public institutions. People must be able to trust local law enforcement, hospitals, schools, and libraries. Yes, we must even be able to trust our city government in order for our society to function. The California Values Act ensures that schools, hospitals, libraries, and courthouses are safe spaces for everyone in our communities. Immigrant families should not fear having safe access to these critical public spaces. All Californians deserve to be treated fairly by law enforcement, no matter their background, no matter where they were born. The California Values Act protects due process for everyone. The federal government has failed to create a workable immigration process. They, the federal government, are breaking up families and creating fear in our communities. The City of San Diego voted to file a brief in support of the California Values Act, because they know that we are less safe when immigrants are afraid to call the police and report crimes. I'm here today to stand up for California values, and to stand against the fear mongers who support them, who oppose them.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Laura, we got two hours of speakers, so please don't clap. Lauren Cornet, followed by Rachel Roth, followed by Dr. Beth Johnson.
Good evening. I believe there is an economic component to the California Values Act. SB 54, the California Values Act, ensures that state and local resources are not used for mass deportations, separating families, and ultimately hurting California's economy. I urge you to support SB 54, the California Values Act. Furthermore, I really detest the use, the phrase "sanctuary cities," because that is reframing by some, it is reframing in order to, the same way that ACA, the Affordable Care Act, was called Obamacare. It is meant to give it a very negative connotation. It is, should be called by its proper name by all, the California Values Act. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Rachel Roth, followed by Reverend Dr. Beth Johnson, followed by Ellen Bartlett.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Rachel Roth, and I live here in Vista, I live in the Shadow Ridge neighborhoods, I'm one of your constituents, Mr. Green. I'm here today as a voter, as a parent, and as the executive board president of the congregation at Palomar Unitarian Universalist Fellowship here in Vista. As a mom, what I hope most for my 13-year-old daughter is that she'll lead a happy and fulfilled life, that she'll have opportunities to grow, learn, and to give back to the community in ways that are meaningful to her. She's an artist, so I think she's going to find ways to bring beauty and to be a truth-teller with her art. I know, because of her white skin and her perfect English and her status as a U.S. citizen, that she will enjoy the basic protections that our city offers, probably without any real sense of fear. If she has to call 911 because there's a fire in our house, she doesn't have to worry that her call will trigger an unrelated investigation into her right to be here. It makes us all safer when we don't second-guess the need to make a call to emergency services, because we fear that we will be targeted. As someone raised by devout Catholics and as a Unitarian Universalist, my faith and my family's values inform my view that it's not just my child who deserves safety, nurturing, and opportunity. The California Values Act reflects my values, that every family in our community should enjoy the same sense of safety and mutual trust with law enforcement that I enjoy. I am grateful that California has enshrined in law the importance of every resident to have the ability to call on emergency services, citizens and immigrants alike. If my house is on fire, I hope that my neighbor, like my daughter, will feel safe to call 911. We all know what is happening in our country right now. We can see that the federal government is employing tactics that are nothing short of barbaric. We do not have to sign on to that here in our beautiful city. Let us make sure that Vista is a welcoming, inclusive town that celebrates our diversity and draws the circle of civic care to include all who live here. I urge you to support SB 54, the California Values Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Dr. Beth Johnson, followed by Ellen Bartlett, followed by Rebecca Medici.
Good evening, Mayor, it's good to see you, councilmembers. I'm the Reverend Dr. Beth Johnson, I'm the minister at Palomar Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, and I'm a Vista resident in Shadow Ridge as well, and I'm here to add my, with my community, to add my voice in support of the California Values Act. And I'm here to lift up our values, the values of California, and the values that we hear said and held up continually, like we heard in all of the presentations here in Vista. And they are the values of all faith and ethical traditions, the values of inclusion, of love, of uplifting the inherent worth and dignity of every person in our community. The California Values Act, a fully constitutional measure, does exemplify the values of California. It makes our community safer by allowing law enforcement to do their jobs, and to not act like agents of deportation. This keeps our community members from not having to live in the shadows, to not have members living in fear for themselves. We value each and every member of our community. This is a moral issue. Every law, every decision that legislators make and representatives make are moral issues. Every one of our religious and ethical traditions and systems upholds the ethic of welcoming the immigrant, the stranger, the refugee. And I think that you'll agree that that is who we want to be. I know that you want to side with love, with love and justice and compassion and mercy. And I know that you want to truly welcome our community members with friendliness, and once again, with that spirit of openness and welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Bartlett, followed by Rebecca Medici, followed by Michael Muffin.
Good evening, city councilmembers and mayor. I just wanted to take a minute to tell you that I am a supporter of SB 54, the California Values Act, and although I don't live in Vista, I spend a lot of time here with my family, my grandson goes to preschool in Vista, and we attend a lot of the functions like the Strawberry Festival. I think there's three main issues I'd like to talk about really quickly, it's the economic issue, the safety issue, and also the humanitarian issue, and specifically related to Vista. I know you've spent a lot of time tonight talking about business interests and how you support businesses. I think by saying that you don't support the California Values Act, that it's going to have an effect on businesses, because it might cause people that are thinking about coming in and doing shopping here to have second thoughts, if they feel fearful about coming in, because they feel that there might, you know, be something regarding immigration that might cause them to be fearful. And also, as a person who shops here a lot, if I know that you're being hostile to immigrant values and to my values, I might consider possibly shopping elsewhere. And so, I think that you need to feel and understand how it's going to affect the business community, first of all. Second of all, it's a safety issue. I know the Sheriff's Department and Sheriff's Gore do feel, support the California Values Act also, and I think that if you're making people in your community feel that it's unsafe to contact the Sheriff's Department, if there's, excuse me, if there's been a crime, then I think that this is going to also cause a sort of a snowball effect or a domino effect in other parts of our community. And I live in Oceanside, and you can't just say that by somebody not calling the Sheriff's Department when they're in fear, because they're afraid of possibly being, you know, held up or deported or separated from their family, that that is only going to affect a small community, that's going to affect your community on a broader basis. And third of all, which obviously to me is also extremely important, is a humanitarian issue. It's not called the California Values Act for nothing. It's saying that we as Californians value all human beings, and we feel that they should be all treated with dignity and respect, and by saying that you are not for the California Values Act, I feel that you're giving Vista the concept of not supporting all human beings that live here, and I think we should all be treated equally. Anybody that is living in the City of Vista, or the surrounding community, or in our state deserves to be treated equally, and I don't think that people should be in California, or be in Vista, or the surrounding communities, living in fear. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Rebecca Medici, followed by Michael Muffin, followed by Karina Contreras.
Hi, I'm a Vista resident, I live in District 1. I very much support the California's Values Act. I think that this act itself states importantly that immigrants are valuable and essential members of the California community. Almost one in three Californians is foreign-born, and one in two children in California has at least one immigrant parent. A relationship of trust between California's immigrant community and state and local agencies is central to the public safety and the people of California. And this is acknowledged by our local law enforcement, as several people have already mentioned, Sheriff Gore very much supports this act, because he knows it keeps people safer. And if they are hooked up to the immigration people, victims of crimes, people who are witnesses, will fear approaching the police, and they will also fear seeking basic health services or attending school, and this will be a detriment to public safety and to well-being of all Californians, and I know our schools would be very concerned if their students feel unsafe, because possibly they're concerned that their parents will be picked up, and so the parents won't drop them off, and our schools will lose big time, too. So, entangling state and local agencies with federal immigration enforcement programs diverts our, also diverts our already limited resources, and blurs the lines of accountability between local, state, and federal governments. So, we should all wholeheartedly support the California Values Act to keep our community and families safe.
Thank you. Michael Muffin, followed by Karina Contreras, followed by Kathleen Lamb.
Good evening, thank you for hearing me tonight. I moved to California 24 years ago to become a teacher at Palomar College, and I remember the first time my wife and I turned off of Vista Way into Main Street, with the Alvo Theater and all these small shops. We felt like we were moving into a classic, small-town America, and we know that Vista has many of those qualities. And we were excited to become a part of the fabric of this beautiful community. The events happening today and the California Values Act has caused me to reflect quite a bit on what are the values that make a community strong and safe and great. And above all, I think that the ability, the capacity for a community to care for those who are most in need is the single value that makes us strong. The single value that America has been built upon, the single value that made the American frontier possible. The ability for communities to care for each other. As a teacher at Palomar College for 24 years, I've had the privilege to meet many, many students of many backgrounds, many of them have been immigrants, have parents who are immigrants, some of them have been documented, some of them not, but I can tell you that every single one of those students had intelligence and strength, and a desire to contribute to the American society, and to contribute to our economy, to live in safety with their families. My ancestors came to this country, I'm of Jewish descent, they came to this country fleeing atmospheres of hatred and violence and fear, where they were scapegoated for the political gains of those in the top. And they came to America for refuge. And as the descendant of those people, I say never again. As you consider your values in your heart, what American values means to you, as you consider the implications, the ramifications, the concrete impact of this bill, I encourage you to imagine your ancestors who came to this country as immigrants. I encourage you to imagine the families that will be affected by this bill. I encourage you to imagine looking at them in the eyes as human beings, as fellow human beings, as fellow travelers on this planet who want one thing, to live in safety for their families and for their children, to thrive, and to know that we have the capacity as Americans.
I need you to wrap up.
Thank you, to make that possible for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Karina Contreras, followed by Kathleen Lamb, followed by Martha Alvarado.
Hello, my name is Karina Contreras, and I strongly support SB 54, known as the California Values Act. And I want to start off by reading something. Immigrants are valuable and essential members of the California community. Almost one in three Californians is foreign-born, and one in two children in California has at least one immigrant parent. A relationship of trust between California's immigrant community and state and local agencies is central to the public safety of the people of California. This trust is threatened when state and local agencies are entangled with federal immigration enforcement, with the result that immigrant community members fear approaching police when they are victims of and witness to crimes, seeking basic health services or attending school, to the detriment of public safety and well-being of all Californians. Entangling state and local agencies with federal immigration enforcement programs diverts already limited resources and blurs the line of accountability between local, state, and federal governments. That sounds wonderful, I wish I wrote it myself. Actually, this is, I'm reading straight from SB 54. Luckily, Kevin DeLeón and Eric Holder wrote this together. This is law. We need to follow the law. SB 54 is 100% constitutional, which we are here to uphold. That's why you have so many people filling this chamber, because we understand that in this time, in this place, we are not going to stand for hate coming into our city. I love Vista, I know you do, too, and I know that you want to do the right thing. The right thing is to follow the law. Luckily, we have that behind us to encourage those who would rather divide our community, encourage them to do the right thing. Now, SB 54 helps protect due process for everyone, including immigrants. We don't need our local sheriffs to be part of the deportation machine. We already have issues here in Vista with trust between the Sheriff's Department and the community. We do not need to continue the escalation of fear and anxiety that this community has already felt. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathleen Lamb. Do we need to take a break, you guys? Okay, Kathleen Lamb, followed by Martha Alvarado, followed by Ann Force.
Good evening, I'm Kathleen Lamb, I'm a retired teacher from Vista High School. I'm proud to say that our school board member, Supriana Vargas, right here, is a student of mine, I'm as proud of him as are all his teachers. I am also speaking in support of SB 54, as a person who has lived all her life on the border, like so many of you. I'm from Arizona, I went to school with kids, the majority of the kids I went to school with spoke Spanish at home. In many ways, the community was very much like Vista, where generations of people have managed to live together for many, many years. As you're considering the California Values Act, I would ask you not to align yourselves with, even symbolically, with an administration which at the moment is focusing on family separation. separation, but rather to think about the vision of your city which you have just discussed. When I was a kid in Yuma, my father told me about a man he admired very much who had relatives living there. His name was Jesus Garcia, the hero of Nacozari. This man, 100 years ago, is still remembered because he had the courage to pull his locomotive with a load of dynamite outside the city and save the entire town. He died in the explosion. When people talk about this incident more than 100 years later, they recognize his courage, his sense of responsibility for others. I think all of us will be judged by history for how we behave in the crisis we're living in now. I hope that all of us, when people talk about us, that they will say the same thing the corrido says about Jesus Garcia, "El que no suspira llora." Thank you, and I hope that you'll act with your best heart.
Thank you. Martha Alvarado, followed by Ann Force, followed by Cantor Larry Cornet.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Martha Alvarado and I'm the proud daughter of Mexican immigrants. I've lived in North County, aboard Camp Pendleton, and Oceanside, and in Vista for 25 years. I served in the Marine Corps a total of eight years, five of those years on active duty. I chose to raise my son here. He played for Vista American Little League, Pony Baseball, and attended Vista High School, graduating from there. I've taught en escondido for over 18 years. I only mention these things because this community is my home. I'm here to contribute to the discussion about the California Values Act, SB 54, and why I support it. Vista, like North County, has a beautiful, diverse community which includes immigrants. Immigrants comprise an important and vital part of the Vista community. They contribute to Vista positively in many ways, such as economically and culturally. SB 54 protects due process for everyone, including immigrants. Justice is supposed to be blind for everyone, including immigrants. Everyone should be treated fairly and justice should be for all. When local law enforcement is forced to act as federal deportation agents, trust and confidence in law enforcement is eroded. Because of this erosion, people are less likely to report crimes, especially women. Witnesses are less likely to testify because of their fear of being deported. It would be a waste to allow limited local resources to be used to oppose SB 54. Those resources could be used in a better way. Also, passing a resolution against the California Values Act would hurt our community and cause an unnecessary divide, create tension. Additionally, a resolution against SB 54 would cause many people to take their money to a city that complies with the law. As an 18-year educator who teaches en escondido, I know firsthand how a resolution against SB 54 can cause trauma, social, emotional damage, illnesses, and undue hardships in children. When children don't feel safe, they won't learn. I see the fear in their eyes every day because they live in a city where elected officials have chosen hate and divisiveness instead of complying with the California Values Act, and it breaks my heart. In closing, I implore this council to do what is moral, just, and fair. Don't contribute to the hate rhetoric that is put forth by the current administration. It's important for Vista to thrive and to continue to comply with the SB 54, the California Values Act. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ann Force. Ann Force, Cantor Larry Cornet, followed by Amanda Macia.
Hi, I'm Ann Force. I'm a registered voter and resident in Vista. I'm glad to see people here supporting our community in Vista, including elected officials, city workers, and community members. And I thought I would talk about how did our state representatives in this district vote on these bills? Patricia Pat Bates, who's our state senator, a member of the Republican Party, and the same as our current president, voted against the California Values Act. And Rocky Chavez, who's our state assemblyman, and he's also in the Republican Party, he was absent for the vote. So, he abstained. And I recommend that the city of Vista abstain from any action on this federal lawsuit because taking action will not affect the merits of the lawsuit in any way. The city council is being pressured by people outside of Vista and by people outside of California. Please resist the pressure. Having lived in Vista since 1997 and having known of at least nine incidents where sheriff's deputies gunned down unarmed young men in the past 10 years, I can understand how our state legislature would want to have some oversight in the way the federal government treats and incarcerates people who are illegally entering the U.S. This area of our county has had organized hate groups persecuting people of color and has had a long history of treating our guest workers and people from Mexico as less than. They have been brutally beaten up for no reason, run over on the roads as they try to walk home or ride their bikes home from work. The state legislature, and Kevin DeLeón in particular, wrote these laws because the state of California is not supposed to be involved in the work of federal immigration. The California Values Laws, SB 54, Assembly Bill 450, and Assembly Bill 103, allow our illegal immigrant residents to have police protection if they are ever victims of a crime. The people who seek to join the federal lawsuit against the state of California are interposing themselves between me and my elected representatives, between the voters and their elected representatives. And they're attempting to nullify the process of our representative government in California.
I need you to wrap up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Cantor Larry Cornet, followed by Amanda Macia, followed by Cindy Odoomen.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers and people who are here, my name is Cantor Larry Cornet. Our congregation is Congregation Bene Thicthen Carlsbad that we serve, Carlsbad, Vista, Oceanside, parts of San Marcos. I'm speaking specifically for myself and for those who I feel need a voice. I want to read a definition to you because I think it's important. "A refugee is a person who has been forced to leave their country in order to escape war, religious, or political prosecution, or a natural disaster." Those are the people that we're talking about. Those are the people who are here. I believe that we have a moral imperative to embrace the California Values Act. Why? Because if we stand for nothing, that's who we are. We have to stand for specific values. We have to stand for the things that are important to us. The most important thing that should be to us is compassion. We talk about laws and we also talk about the fact that the punishment has to fit the crime. We're talking about punishing people in a severe way if we follow the policies of the current administration. If we follow SB 54, if we follow the California Values Act, we're truly enforcing the law in a compassionate, intelligent, and thoughtful way. If you go down this rabbit hole, we've seen what's happened, or what had happened, in Eastern Europe, but we've also seen what happened in our own backyard. And that's where people are going to turn in people who live next door to them for whatever reason because they're different. And then, we're going to start rounding up people. It happened in the internment camps when we were so concerned about the Japanese that we put them in internment camps. It happened in Eastern Europe where people turned brother against brother. That's what's going to happen. If we don't embrace the values that support our moral fiber, we run the risk of losing them. I would implore you, in the strongest possible terms, to support SB 54 and make sure that your values are represented to the highest moral character possible, as I know that this body would like to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Amanda Macia, followed by Cindy Odoomen, followed by David Smelser.
Madam Mayor and Council, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking in strong support of SB 54, the California Values Act. My name is Amanda Macia. I'm an Oceanside resident and member of Pilgrim United Church of Christ. And I'm speaking here underneath the umbrella of "Love Thy Neighbor." I would like to speak specifically to San Diego Sheriff Bill Gore's support of the California Values Act. He conducted an interview with KPBS just two short months ago, and I will be quoting directly from the transcript of that interview. KPBS asked Sheriff Gore about Mission Viejo's opposition to SB 54. Sheriff Gore responded, "I saw that. I disagree. The city council, I can't. They want to take an action that if the deputy out in the field stops a person and they believe that they're in the country illegally, that they can call ICE and have them respond. I disagree with that, and I have from the get-go on this since I became sheriff. And I think in talking to my fellow sheriffs, maybe with the exception of one or two, and the chiefs of police in California, we are less safe, I believe, if people in this country illegally perceive us as immigration officers. I just truly believe that. If they're afraid, and if you look at San Diego County, what are the numbers? You hear them, 300,000 people in San Diego County undocumented. How many millions in the state of California? And if they feel like they can't report a crime, be a witness to a crime in San Diego or the Sheriff's Department, we're all less safe." That is a direct quote from Sheriff Bill Gore. They asked him about joining Trump's lawsuit, and he responded, quote, "Trump's doing stuff that's sometimes outrageous to the right, and we're just trying to focus on providing good public safety in San Diego County, and I think we've got it right now as best as we can do." They further asked, "Would your position change in the next four years if you're re-elected?" Which Sheriff Gore was, and he responded, "No. No. Tell your constituents, you're not going to be arrested for reporting a crime or being a witness to a crime. I said if my wife gets mugged or raped, God forbid, and somebody can stop that or be a witness, I don't care if they're in the country with documentation or without documentation. I want them to be able to come forward, and I think that's kind of the way we all should feel." The last question that they asked was, "Do you think that San Diego cities and counties should take any approach to join the Trump lawsuit?" Sheriff Gore responded, quote, "I'd tell them to stay out of it. I mean, it's filed, and that would be my recommendation. There's enough politics involved in this situation as it is," end quote.
Thank you. Cindy Odoomen, followed by David Smelser, followed by Clarissa Smelser.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmember. I live in Vista, and my zip code is 92083. As a Japanese-American, I have a need to speak out whenever I see a potential injustice being perpetrated on my neighbors. I have to speak out. I have to speak out because my community has suffered the indignities of internment camps. The act of scapegoating on our vulnerable minority is wrong, and history will look harshly on any group of leaders who choose to divide and terrorize the members of its community, especially when the people of this state has already decided that immigrants are valuable and essential members of this state. The California Values Act declares that the relationship of trust between the community and local agencies is essential to the safety of all people. The trust is threatened when immigrant community members fears approaching a sheriff when they are victim of and witness to crime. The trust is threatened when they are fearful of seeking basic health service or attending school. When trusts are broken, everyone's safety and well-being are placed at risk. I request that you keep this community safe by keeping the California Values Act and reject the fears and divisiveness that the federal suit represent. Thank you.
Thank you. David Smelser, followed by Clarissa Smelser, followed by Caroline Thies-Erd.
Good evening. My name is David Smelser, and I have lived in Vista since 2001. I value the safety and security of our families, neighbors, and community. It is important to me that everyone in our community deserves to be treated fairly by law enforcement, no matter their background, what they look like, or where they were born. I ask the mayor and the city council to support the California Values Act. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clarissa? Followed by Caroline, followed by Linda Isabene.
Hi, and thank you. I moved to Vista sort of by accident. This was where we found an affordable house. Now, 20 years later, this is the city I would probably choose out of all of San Diego County to live in. I love Vista, and I am urging you to support California Values Act, SB 54. I think the title says it all. Our values are being attacked all the time, and we need to push back. Our city needs to stand up for moral values, and this gives us a chance to do it and to obey the law that California as a state has decided is right. One of the values we need to do is to support our friends and neighbors. Supporting SB 54 seems to me, at least, to be the very least we can do. We need to show our undocumented neighbors and friends that we value their contribution to our city and our country. I want Vista to reflect compassion and inclusion, not fear, hate, and xenophobia. That's why I want to stay here. Thank you.
Thank you, Clarissa. Carolyn, followed by Linda, I think it's, it looks like B-O-E-E-N, but it could be an R, and then followed by Anna Arden.
Hi. Good evening. I am a Vista resident, and I just wanted to share that, you know, I'm proud to live in Vista. I've been here for seven years, and I'm really proud of the way things are developing in Vista. I'm proud of the diverse community that we have and the diverse businesses that we have. And I guess I really don't understand why the council would even bring this up, because I think it's a really divisive issue, and I think that it will tarnish our reputation in North County and in San Diego County. I know that we had, a group of us had wanted to ask the council to do a welcoming cities resolution, and part of what we heard was that that would be divisive. And at the time, I thought, now, why would that be divisive, to say that we're welcoming to everyone when we know that we are a community of immigrants? You know, we're a very diverse community, and we're successful because of that. And so, I guess what I'm saying tonight is I really, really do not understand why this is even on the agenda. The other thing I wanted to say, I know people have spoken to the public safety standpoint. Dr. Tom Wong at UCSD released a study very recently that said that cities that have a clear separation between local law enforcement and federal immigration enforcement are safer because more people are willing to report crimes. Recently, I'm also a volunteer for North County Immigration Task Force, and we were basically putting together a packet of resources because the mental health of the immigrant community has been severely impacted by what's been going on, and we wanted to look at what was available. And in calling both Women's Resource Center, which serves this whole area, and Community Resource Center, both of them told me that reports of sexual assault, people coming forward are down. Reports of domestic violence, women are afraid to come forward. That's not the community that I want. I want a community where everyone feels safe. The other thing is that both FBI statistics, you can look them up, the Cato Institute, which is libertarian, both of them have research stating that there are lower crime rates associated with a higher immigrant population, because statistically, immigrants are much less likely to commit crimes than those who are native-born. So, this whole idea of conflating So this whole idea of conflating immigration with criminality, to me, is horrific and hurtful and divisive and not useful. And so, I think if you look at the facts, you’ll see that actually, the California Values Act has merit. It was done for a purpose. For those who say that police will be unable to do their jobs, okay. 800 crimes are listed where they can collaborate. So you tell me what’s not on there that you’re worried about, and then we’ll talk.
Thanks, Caroline. Okay, Linda, followed by Anna Arden, followed by Marta Goddard. What is your last, how do you spell your last name?
B-R-E-N with a B.
B-R-E-N.
Sorry about that.
No, that’s okay. That’s okay.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I grew up in North County, and I’m currently a Carlsbad resident, but I’ve been a frequent and regular volunteer at a local food pantry, so I do care about this community. I would direct your attention to a document that I gave the clerk earlier that’s entitled, “Setting the Record Straight on Local Involvement in Federal Civil Immigration Enforcement.” And this document was signed on by attorneys general of several states. It does have some factual information for us about why the California Values Act would keep us safer. First, the part I would like to read is that, one of its conclusions is, “Lawfully limiting law enforcement agency involvement in federal civil immigration functions can enhance public safety, including by enabling those law enforcement agencies to focus their limited resources on combating serious and violent crime in the communities they serve and by facilitating greater community cooperation with the justice system.” There’s a lot of data in this report. One of them that is interesting was, from April 2016 to April 2017, the number of Latinos reporting rapes in Houston was down by more than 40% from the period the previous year. And there’s data from several other studies in the report indicating that indeed, undocumented residents and even documented Latinos may be more hesitant to report crimes. I do believe this makes us all less safe. I’ll just conclude with a quote by the Montgomery, Maryland, police chief. It says, “The reluctance of folks to come forward because they are undocumented and fear deportation is a much greater public safety problem than having people here who may be undocumented but are not committing other crimes.” So I would ask you to support the California Values Act. It does keep us all safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Arden, followed by Marta Goddard, followed by Hope Nelson.
Good evening. My name is Anna Arden, and I am a Vista resident. I’m here to, today to express my support for SB 54, the California Values Act. I commend the governor and Senator Kevin Delone for passing the law because it protects the rights of immigrants who live in California. I support SB 54 because local law enforcement should not engage in immigration enforcement. Local law enforcement should not act like immigration agents. We don’t want to live in fear of deportation. We don’t want to be separated from our families by unjust immigration policies. What we want is to live with dignity. We want our communities to be respected and our rights to be protected. I ask you to follow the example of the city of Solana Beach, whose council will discuss a resolution to oppose the Trump’s, the Trump administration’s zero tolerance policy on immigration tomorrow. They are an example of bravery, as they stand against bigotry, racism, and xenophobia. We cannot stand silent when our government is incarcerating families, tearing babies and children from their parents, and criminalizing people just for seeking refuge in the United States. And today, I urge you as city council, as local government, to stand with immigrant families and to support SB 54.
Thank you. Marta Goddard, followed by Hope Nelson, followed by Reverend Kathleen Lambert.
Good evening, member of the council. My name is Marta Goddard. I am an immigrant from Honduras. I am a student of Universidad Popular here in Vista. I am here to support the California law SB 54 because I believe that it is a human right for immigrants to live in peace, peace and freedom. I don’t want my fellow immigrants to live in fear. I ask you to support SB 54 and to do everything in your power to make Vista a welcoming city for immigrants and all people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hope Nelson, Reverend, followed by Reverend Kathleen Lambert, followed by Adam Lambert.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Thank you, Cantor Cornet. Your words resonated with me. I’m Jewish. Everyone needs to remember history right now. I’m not going to take too much of your time tonight. You need to hear from your Vista community, and I’m a Carlsbad resident. I’m here tonight to briefly share with you our experience in Carlsbad. My city council started this same process about a month ago, and sadly, Carlsbad passed a resolution against SB 54. Like Carlsbad, you are too late to make a difference by taking action against SB 54. You will gain no standing at this point in time. I hate what my city council did. They created division in my community, and for nothing. I hope you don’t do that to Vista. I know you don’t want division in your community. My suggestion, support SB 54 and let the courts handle this. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Kathleen Lambert, followed by Adam Lambert, followed by Kim Yucienz.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Council Members all. I am a Vista resident, and I respect your office and the weight of your responsibility to all the residents of the city of Vista. I also appreciate that you are people of faith, a faith that guides you in all that you do. As a minister of the Word and Sacrament in the Presbyterian Church USA, one of the largest mainstream Protestant denominations in the country, and the denomination of which our current President of the United States is a member, I wanted to bring you some words that guide our denomination. The Presbyterian Church of General Assembly stated clerk Reverend J. Herbert Nelson II issued this statement from the denomination condemning the Trump’s administration’s new policy of separating young children from their families. Here’s the full text. “As Presbyterians, for the meeting of our 223rd General Assembly, we are mindful of the many issues of justice, peace, and compassion we face, both as citizens of the United States and members of the body of our Lord Jesus Christ. While we face issues of peace on the Korean Peninsula, tragic injustice in the Middle East, and the specter of climate change in our nation and our world, there is nothing more urgent than the tragedy that is unfolding at our borders, where children are ripped from their parents and placed in holding cells, and while their frantic parents scream in agony at the separation. What has this nation become? How have we wandered so far from Jesus’s kind admonition, ‘Let the children come to me, for it is such as these that the kingdom of heaven belongs’? How can this be happening in a nation in which so many claim the traditions of Christianity, Judaism, Islam, and the critical importance of families to the fabric of our lives together? Perhaps the most egregious aspect of this policy is the willingness of the highest legal official of our nation to suggest that if a mother has fled violence in her own country to save herself and her children, but has not had a chance to make proper petition for safety in the U.S., that she should be taught a lesson by having her child taken from her? It is almost incomprehensible that these acts should be used as a warning to others who would come. What makes matters worse is the audacity of quoting the Apostle Paul’s admonition to believers in Romans 13:1 to obey the law, presumably whatever the law says, while ignoring the higher scriptural demand that love is the fulfilling of the law, Romans 13:10. The crisis of tens of thousands of desperate people coming to the United States for relief seems almost overwhelming, but as the officials of our government attempt to address the crisis, we cannot afford to tarnish our values.”
Thank you.
I would ask you to please listen and not take the same...
I need you to wrap up.
Okay. Well, I would just like you to listen. I’ve never seen a church attack its own member.
You know what? You need to wrap this up. We have a whole lot more speakers.
Okay. I just wanted you to hear that. Thank you.
Adam Lambert, followed by Kim, it looks like Yucienz, Yucienz, followed by Helen Linder, who is not speaking. Actually, she’s in favor, but she’s not speaking. And this will be followed by then Felicia Gomez.
Thank you for having me. I am shocked that this is even being discussed. Is this the thing where you guys go, hey, other city councils are doing it, we should do it too? It’s the law, passed in California, not for political reasons, but in order to ensure that we can keep our communities safe. SB 54 is the right thing to do for community safety. Numerous studies demonstrate this. Science proves this. I can provide a long list of studies, but I don’t want this to be as boring as a city council meeting. The bottom line of these studies state that cooperation between immigration enforcement and local law enforcement will harm public safety, primarily if victims and witnesses of crimes do not feel safe. They will not report the crimes and will not cooperate with law enforcement. This puts everyone at risk. Now, I don’t know about you, God forbid, if I’m ever the victim of a crime where there are witnesses, I want those witnesses to speak up, regardless of whether or not they’re immigrants. Supporting a lawsuit against SB 54 is going against science and the safety of Vista residents, and any harm that comes to any resident as a result of this will fall directly on your Even council members who are not here. How this even became an agenda item speaks to a xenophobic and racist nature that has become pervasive in our culture, and I hope it’s not through our city council, because, well, you believe in science. I would hope that the council will have the sense to follow good science and not the divisive nature of reality TV that has taken over our country. I’m also hoping that your record on CAP doesn’t reflect your ability to comprehend common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kim, you, Kim, that’s Y-U-S-K-I-E-N-I-C-Z. Is that, how do you pronounce it? Are you Kim?
No, I’m Felicia. Sorry about that. That’s why I was giving you a blank stare. But, good evening. My name is Felicia Gomez. I’m a longtime Vista resident. I now work at the California Immigrant Policy Center, which is a statewide organization that advances pro-immigrant policy at the state and local levels. And I come before you today to speak in strong support of SB 54. When local, as many people before me have discussed, when local police and sheriffs act as deportation, that further undermines trust and confidence. People are less likely to report crimes when victims and witnesses fear they may be deported when they come into contact with local law enforcement. And there is overwhelming evidence showing the adverse effects that occur when local law enforcement engage in immigration enforcement. A UC San Diego study from April 2018 found that 60.8% of San Diegans are less likely to report crime they witness, with 42.9% saying they would be less likely to report being a victim of a crime to local law enforcement if local police work with Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE. Another study by New York, by the New York Times from this month, June 2018, illustrates that police departments across the nation, including San Diego, have been experiencing a steady decline in domestic violence and sexual assault reports in Latino communities due to the fear of deportation. These statistics reveal the culture of fear that is created when federal immigration agencies utilize local law enforcement as deportation agents. In that same UC San Diego study, an overwhelming number of San Diegans report that they would be less likely to use public services, do business, participate in public events where police are present, place children in an after-school or daycare program, or even look for a new job if their local law enforcement agency works with ICE. SB 54 seeks to ensure that all communities are safe and able to access public locations, such as schools, libraries, healthcare facilities, and courthouses, regardless of immigration status. In Vista, there has already been movement on the implementation of safe spaces, even though these provisions do not go into effect until October 2018. The Vista Unified School Board passed a “Make Schools a Welcoming Place” resolution in December 2016, underscoring children’s constitutional right to seek a public education free of deport, free of fear of deportation. Actions by the Vista Unified School Board show the city’s commitment to diversity and inclusivity and a respect for differences, and the city council should follow suit. The decision to include SB 54 as a discussion item for the Vista City Council today appears to be a purely symbolic move to boost political campaigns and to foster divisiveness and xenophobia in an already divisive political climate. SB 54 is constitutional state law and has been meticulously reviewed by state lawmakers and the government, governor, which ultimately led to its passage last year in 2017. Any decision to engage in the federal lawsuit against California is in the minority and out of touch with Vista constituents. As revealed by the amicus brief submitted in May, a mere seven localities officially joined the amicus brief in support of the United States, where while the brief filed in support of California’s pro-immigrant laws, had the support of 27 different localities in the state, including some of the most populated regions in...
I need you to wrap up, please.
...in the county. I push Vista City Council to support the California Values Act and stand for our state and city’s values of compassion for all people in our communities. Thank you.
Is Kim here? Is Kim Yucienz, is she not here? If not, actually, we’re halfway through the speakers. Do you guys want to take maybe a five-minute break? That’d be good? Okay. Okay, we’re gonna break for five minutes.[1570.53] Okay. You guys, you guys ready down there? Okay, everybody, if you have your seats. If you take, if we're gonna have quiet. Well, it's fun to do that. Okay, go on with our next 25 speakers. Okay, so, starting out, I'll call three names again here. We'll start out with Mary Jo Poole, followed by Brandy Clayton, followed by Dr. Freddie Avalo. Is that Baylor? Avalo. I tried to say it. I couldn't get it out. Sorry. Hi, Mary Jo.
Hi, how's everybody this fine evening?
We're just great.
Good. I can, I'm glad to hear that. I can say that I'm not surprised to see this on the agenda. You never miss a, a chance to do these kinds of things. So, my name is Mary Jo Poole. I've taught criminology at Cal State San Marcos for 17 years. I've lived in the North Santa Fe Corridor for about 20 years and interact daily with my neighbors and our youth, I fear, for my community. I want to publicly note and state my extreme disappointment that this discussion is taking place in the absence of John Aguilera, the representative for the largely Latino District 1, and is up for reelection in November.
He had already planned a vacation a long time ago, so...
Well, it's just a very convenient absence. So, I just wanted to publicly state and note that absence. Thank you. It seems the same thing kind of occurred in Carlsbad. So, I ask the city council to stand in strong support of SB 54. Keeping immigration enforcement is imperative for a safe community. I'd like to point out a finding in the recently published V-Grip study here in Vista, that after a gang prevention program with the involvement of our sheriffs, the 4th and 5th graders responded to whether they would call a sheriff with a, with a, about a crime, with a decrease of 3 points from 89 to 86% after the intervention program. I looked at the reasons that were cited. This program ran from 2015 to 2017. Nowhere are the reasons cited that these kids may be suffering from this recent Trump administration installation, as well as the recent killings of Jonathan Cornell and Sergio Wick in our community. I don't, I've rewritten it so many times. You know, the council should be concerned about why 4th and 5th graders are saying no, after an intervention, they don't want to contact the police. Martha Alvarado talked about that. In conclusion, a vote to join this lawsuit would be a sadistic use of power by your, by this council. It will further divide and terrorize our community. Support of SB 54, on the other hand, will send a compassionate message that a safe community begins with all residents feeling safe to report crimes, walk on the streets, go to the store, hospitals, and schools. Support of SB 54 will help to alleviate the suffering too many in our community are experiencing at this very shameful time in our country's history. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandy Clayton, followed, do we need another break? Brandy Clayton, followed by Dr. Freddie, followed by Sarah Spinks.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. How are you? I am here, as everyone else thus far, to strongly support the California Values Act, and I'm here to strongly urge you to do the same. My first argument, like so many other arguments that you've heard tonight, are based on morality and basic human decency. Let me state here, in Vista, immigrants are a vital part of our community. Immigrants provide immense value to communities. We need to recognize the humanity of every person who calls our city home, no matter their background, what they look like, or where they were born. And as a Christian, as a Christian, I am here to bear witness to the fact that all human beings are children of God. And that is why you must support the existing law, but it is also a moral imperative, particularly if you call yourselves Christian, to support an existing law, the California Values Act. It will help to ensure our schools, hospitals, libraries, and courthouses are safe for everyone in our diverse community. This new law ensures that immigrants who are victims of crimes will be able to report those crimes and make everybody safer. As Vista's, we share, hopefully, core values, right? Every Vista, every human being, every Californian should be able to trust the public institutions that serve us. Trust between people and public institutions are central to our democracy. If people cannot trust public institutions like our local law enforcement, particularly our local law enforcement, then, friends, we are all lost. All Californians deserve to be treated fairly by law enforcement, no matter what their background. My second part of the argument, others have shared, is it is a law. It is currently a law, right? And that is why the cities of Chula Vista and National City have passed resolutions in support of this law, because they know that we are less safe when immigrants are afraid to call the police and report crimes. That is why local police, sheriffs should not act as border agents. Finally, well, not finally, I've got one more thing. Sheriff Gore strongly, as you heard, Sheriff Gore, a man, the Vista City Council, in my presence, in this body, and in this room
Your time is up, but finish your sentence.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Strongly, also strongly supports this bill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sarah Spinks, followed by Frank Sloot, followed by Ida Santos.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Sarah Spinks, and I am so happy I live in Vista tonight. I want to say thank you to Amanda Rigby and Councilmember John Franklin, both councilmembers, I'm sorry, for putting this on the agenda tonight. This is amazing. This community, I'm so proud I never left here. I strongly support SB 54, the California Values Act. I believe having a safe community for all is of the utmost importance. As I understand, SB 54 and our own local ordinances are sound law and policy, and we accept, expect all local agencies to follow the law of California. If the intent tonight is to consider passing a resolution against the California Values Act, I believe it would damage the community trust with, between officials and all residents, and ultimately create a larger problem than the one it aims to solve. Thank you, and again, I support this California Values Act.
Frank Sloot, followed by Ida Santos, followed by Matt Lacante.
Hello, councilmembers. I'm Frank Sloot. I've lived in Vista for almost 40 years, so I'm strongly in support of the California Values Act, and I just have something I'd like to share with you and all the nice audience out there, and so I'm gonna play a little song. Here we go. You guys know this land is your land.
Wait, wait, you got, excuse me. You have to face us.
This land is your land. This land is my land. California to the New York island. From the redwood forest to the Gulf Stream waters. This land was made for you and me. Let's do it again. This land is your land. This land is my land. From California to the New York island. From the redwood forest to the Gulf Stream waters. This land was made for you and me. Okay, thank you for giving me a little time here, and I just want to say I also teach ESL at Vista Adult School after I retired from elementary education. And to see the, when people graduate, it is so cool. And I know you, a couple of you came to our school, and you should come there and see the successes of all of our immigrant community. That's, that's what makes Vista, right?
Right.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, on with the meeting, okay? Elizabeth Santos, is Elizabeth here? I don't see Elizabeth. Okay, so maybe she went home. So, how about Matt Lacante? Is that, and then followed by Dr. Kathleen Boyle, followed by Mary Ann, is it Vimy? Yes.
Hello, City Council. I've heard nothing but reasons why we shouldn't be here, but I haven't heard any reasons why we should be here. So, to councilmembers Rigby and Franklin, who brought the issue up, why are we here today?
They're not gonna answer your, this is your three minutes for you, this is your three minutes for you to talk, right into the microphone, please.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to understand why we're here. I know Councilmember Franklin said this was a controversial issue, so I'd just like to acknowledge that he's the one that kind of started the controversy tonight.
Thank you, sir. Kathleen Boyle, followed by Mary Ann Vimy, followed by Arcela Nunez.
Hi, good evening. I am a resident of Vista District 2. The California Values Act, SB 54, is not a get-out-of-jail-free card. Basically, any act that could get you arrested, you could still get arrested under SB 54. That's misdemeanor and felony. Local law enforcement just can't go after people because of their immigration status. They can't add aid, ICE in that. Long before there was a California Values Act, there were California values. I will speak into the mic. And community groups and local law enforcement realized that undocumented immigrants were not always coming forth and reporting crimes, crimes that they were the victim of, crimes that they witnessed. So, these groups, social service agencies, and local law enforcement got together and worked on building trust throughout our state. It's not, it wasn't 100%. It didn't happen easily or quickly, but trust began to be built. And so, people came forth and were reporting crimes, whether they were the victim or, or a witness. However, once we got into 2017, California was worried that this separation and trust was going to be eroded because of the new administration. So, that's why SB 54 came about, to maintain the separation, so that people would be, would be arrested for crimes, not because of their status. Tonight, I'm focusing on domestic violence as a crime to talk about. One of the most underreported crimes there is, within the first six months of this new administration, reporting of domestic violence went way down. This is across the country, but I have the statistics, and I gave you all a graph of the statistics for California. So, in our three biggest cities, San Francisco, San Diego, and Los Angeles, you can see how the report rate went down for Latinos. They have it broken down by ethnicity, so not all those Latinos were immigrants or undocumented immigrants, but if you look at the lines on the, on these charts, the, the reporting of domestic violence went down so much for Latinos, and barely a blip for non-Latinos. So, there wasn't just a thing where reporting is down. Reporting is down for Latinos. So, what does that mean? There's people who are the victims of domestic violence, who are afraid to come forward, who are afraid, even the women are afraid to go to a women's shelter. Some of the women's shelters say that they have no, no immigrants at this point, no undocumented immigrants. They just don't go there. So, they don't even go to a place to escape from this abuser, to a place where they can be safe, because they are afraid that they might get deported from there. So, we have to...
I need you to wrap up.
I will wrap up. So, please support SB 54.
Thank you. Mary Ann, it's, I think it's Vimy? Vimy? Okay, sorry. And followed by Arcela Nunez, followed by Lilian Serrano Alamo.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mary Ann Vimy, and I'm from Carlsbad. And first of all, I've, I've got to say, this is my first Vista, City of Vista council meeting.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. And in Carlsbad, I haven't really seen very much of music and singing, and I really enjoyed that, and I think I might recommend that to happen in Carlsbad. So, I also wanted to congratulate you on your fire departments and its incredible health program.
It is.
And also to, to thank everybody who spoke at the community meeting tonight, who spoke so eloquently, and especially, I wanted to, I thank Karina Contreras for her reading of the initial part, the first parts of SB 54. So, my position is that I wholeheartedly support SB 54, and, and my request is that you do so also. According to a recent California state poll, over 62% of people in California support SB 54. SB 54. SB 54 supports human rights, protects due process, which is a fundamental right of everyone in this country, of anyone living in this country. It supports California family values, and it makes sure that California public resources are used in the way that they were intended, and so that it does not force California to participate in policies such as the one recently in federal immigration policy that allowed for parents and children to be separated and for children to experience mental pain and anguish that will possibly stay with them for a very, very long time, innocent children. So I'm asking you to support SB 54, and also to take no action on a lawsuit, and to, and by doing that, I think you're going to make a real headway in keeping this community together, and so that it can move forward in a constructive, healthy, loving, and peaceful way. So thank you.
Thank you. Arcela, followed by Lilian Serrano Alamo, followed by Alexis Panchivry. Hi, Arcela.
Hello. So, good evening, councilmembers. As co-director of Universidad Popular, or People's University, and as a lifelong defender of immigrant rights and human rights, I am just so impressed with the turnout this evening, and I'm really amazed at the image that you get to see all evening of what democracy looks like when we all participate.[726.43][726.43](audience cheering) But it is with really tremendous disappointment that I stand before you this evening, because when I saw this discussion coming up on the agenda, I was really saddened and, but disappointed, a little bit angry, because I work every day with amazing people who are here this evening from Universidad Popular, and I'm going to ask them to stand up because they asked me to speak on their behalf. Universidad Popular promotes education, civic participation, and community safety. Above all, we share values of equality and of justice for all, and we are here to decry divisive politics. You already heard some incredible, compelling, kind arguments urging the city council to take no action on the Trump lawsuit. Let's be honest, and I'm a very honest person, Donald Trump's policies are going to fuel prejudice, hatred, and division within this community where I come to work every day. These are not the values of democracy. These are values that divide us, so we urge you to please uphold the law. I teach social studies every day to youth and adults, and we spend a lot of time talking about separation of powers. This is a time to take that lesson. The last time I checked my Facebook page, we still had a democracy, not a Trump monarchy, so let's uphold that. Lastly, I wanted you to know that we are very concerned with community safety. We are so concerned that Universidad Popular has a group of peacekeepers who you've met today, but we think that every single one of us is a peacekeeper and security force in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lilian Alamo, followed by Alexis, is it Panchivry? What is it? And that's followed by Ricardo Favella.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. My name is Lilian Serrano, and today I'm here as Chair of the San Diego Immigrant Rights Consortium. For those of you who are not familiar with our coalition, we're a coalition of over 50 organizations throughout San Diego County that work together in partnership to protect and uphold immigrant rights and refugee rights throughout our region. Today, I'm here to speak in favor of the California Values Act, because, not just because it's a policy that our coalition supported throughout the legislative process, but it's also a state law that we have actually been watching really closely on its implementation. As a coalition, and as part of the leadership of the coalition, I have had the pleasure to meet with every single law enforcement department in the county of San Diego County. We have met with community college police departments, we have met with city police departments, we have met with Sheriff Gore multiple times, and while we disagree with many of the practices that are still happening in our community, and while we still and probably will continue disagreeing with a lot of different ideas being proposed, what we all agree on is that everyone is safe when there's actual trust between community members and law enforcement. Law enforcement is not able to do their job if community does not trust them. So with that in taking in consideration, we are supportive of the California Values Act. We know that that is not the final solution. We need more. Cities like Vista, communities like Vista, where I actually come and work every day, have a long history of mistrust against law enforcement. And if you ask community members in the room, they will give you a clear answer of why is that? Why is it that Vista residents don't trust the sheriff deputies? What is it that Vista residents don't want law enforcement in their communities? And they will have answers. And while we can probably take many years trying to address every single one of those answers, the California Values Act starts providing us the guidance to start shifting our policies in a more positive way, when the rest of the world, and I'm not saying the rest of the county, and I'm not saying the rest of the country, the rest of the world is wondering, where are the values in the United States of America? When the rest of the world starts wondering, what are the values in the country where they are breaking families apart, putting childrens in cages, and persecuting people based on their religion, we want our local elected officials to send a message that our values are with the people, and we stand with families. Thank you.[1073.08][1073.08](audience cheering)
Okay, Alexis, and I see that you put here Panchiv, so that I could pronounce it correctly, and I didn't see that until just now.
Don't worry, girl, I got you.
Okay.[1088.13][1088.13](laughter)
All right. Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Alexis Panchiv. You don't have to do that. I am a Vista resident in the 92084 ZIP code. I am here tonight in support of the California Values Act, or SB 54. One of the main concerns regarding SB 54 is public safety. Like everyone else, I am concerned about it, too. I believe that it is important to understand that involving our local community, law enforcement, and immigration enforcement will negatively impact our city in the following ways. Officers with their training, expertise, and time will be diverted away from the community's needs, making time responses, sorry, response times longer, and putting our residents at greater risk. Also, immigrants and other community members will not come forward to report crimes they witnessed or had committed against them if they feared deportation when doing so. According to the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, the report republished in May 2015, immigrants often fear approaching police officers when they are victims of and witnesses to crime, and when local police are entangled with federal immigration enforcement. At all levels of government, it is important that laws, policies, and practices not hinder the ability of local law enforcement to build strong relationships necessary to public safety and community well-being. It is the view of this task force that whenever possible, state and local law enforcement should not be involved in immigration. Additionally, I read another study, briefly stated, a study conducted by the University of Illinois similarly found that 44% of Latinos are less likely to contact police officers if they have been victim of a crime because they fear police officers will use this interaction as an opportunity to inquire about their immigration status or the immigration status of people that they know in their community. I believe it's simply wrong to put anybody in this situation. And the last point I would like to make is that SB 54, the California Values Act, increases public safety. By encouraging community involvement and participation, SB 54 ensures that schools, courthouses, doctor's offices, and other places may be utilized without fear, and for kids, I feel this is especially important. We want our kids to go to school. We want them to learn. We want them to grow. We want them to be our future, and they simply cannot do that when they're in fear for deportation for themselves and their community members. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ricardo Favella, followed by, is it Rocio?
Rocio.
Rocio, okay, followed by Rocio, followed by, go ahead, because I'll, I need my glasses for this one. Go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening to everyone, everyone else that's here. Love to see everybody here tonight. What's happening today? We finally see some sanity in North County, so I'm very honored to be here. I am Ricardo Favella. I'm the coordinator of the Alianza Comunitaria. We are a coalition of human rights network organizations. In North County, we are a human rights network with the following of over 30,000 people on social media, between our different social media platforms, through our text message rapid response system. We are one of the largest networks of Latinos in North County. We monitor human rights conditions, human rights abuses affecting our communities, and in particular checkpoints. And why is that? Why is that? It's because checkpoints is, has become where we can become entangled with law enforcement. This group has grown precisely because of that distrust that already exists, that has existed in our communities for decades. So that entanglement that could happen, we've seen before, we haven't seen it lately, but we've seen ICE officers near checkpoints. This was at a time before, you know, there was pressure to push back against the cooperation of immigration and police agencies, but we continue to monitor to this. We continue to monitor these checkpoints because there's always a risk of that happening again. But I can tell you, from having our pulse on the community, from having our ear to the community and to having eyes in the community, that we live in two Americas. We live in an America, one America that is privileged, and another one that is targeted. Right? And I'm talking about North County, I'm talking about 30,000 people between Escondido, you know, San Marcos, Vista, Oceanside, Carlsbad, Fallbrook, and surrounding communities. We live one America that is under the constant threat of hostility and insecurity, and under the risk of family separation, and another one that lives in an ignorance of convenience. And we know this, we know this because people reach out to us. You know, on a weekend, most of us, especially right now in the summer, beautiful Southern California, we're looking forward to going to the beach, we're looking forward to going out and being with our loved ones. People contact us, they want to know if it's safe to go out and do the same things. They want to know, is there going to be a checkpoint? What do you know about a raid? We hear this from people, and even, even when there's a suggestion, a rumor of something like this happening...
Okay.
You need to know the panic that that creates in our communities.
Thank you, sir.
So my question is this...
No, you already ran over, so I got...
Let me end with this question.
We still have a big pile, so please, let the next person go. No, sir.
Are you going to call someone?
No, you're done. Rocio, followed by Arlet Flores, followed by Pat Imus.
Hi, my name is Rocio. I am a Vista resident, and I'm in support of the California Values Act, a law that should be followed. This law is important because it helps due process for everyone, including immigrants. And when local police and sheriffs act as deportation agents, it further undermines trust and confidence. An example of this happening right now in Vista is that less than a year ago, a sheriff's deputy shot my unarmed cousin, Jonathan Coronel, 22 times in his back. Jonathan, the same officer, also shot Sergio Wake less than a year, months before, shooting him 19 times. Jonathan's immigrant uncle spoke out against the denial of Jonathan's due process and the robbery of his life. As a consequence of speaking out, the sheriffs arrested him, targeted his immigrant uncle, and acted as immigration enforcement, and worked with ICE to send his immigrant uncle to a detention center in Otay Mesa, also known as a concentration camp, despite his uncle having legal residency. So violating the Values Act is happening in Vista. It upholds police brutality, and I also want to ask Jonathan's partner, Jonathan's family, Jonathan's daughter, who's here and are allies, to stand up, because these are the families and the communities that are experiencing this trauma.[1568.91][1568.91](audience cheering)
Arlet Flores Apencio. Is Arlet here? Okay, is Pat? Oh, she coming? Are you coming? Okay. And then followed by Pat. It's, it looks like Imus, E-M-A-U-S. Imus? And then followed by Mike Woods.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Arlet Flores Aparicio, and I live in 92081. So I hope you remember me as an active student at Rancho Buena Vista, as a, and a community member in Vista. I was a youth commissioner for the Community and Safety Commission. I was a school board member with Cypriano Vargas, and I was active in various activities at Rancho Buena Vista. I'm also a first-generation high school, ongoing college student. I'll be attending University of Riverside in the fall and majoring in public policy. I'm speaking in the behalf of my credibility because I'm a child of immigrant parents, because of my parents and my grandparents sacrificing and coming to the land of dreams, and for me to be able to accomplish in what I have accomplished here in Vista. I'm here in support for the California Values Act because there are many students like me that have came from parents of immigrant parents, and the state of California being one of the best states in the country because of our progress. And lastly, I just want you to remember, as a student like me in Vista, and my peers, many of my peers who are undocumented, that one day, they can't even call Vista Sheriff or even go to the hospital because they're undocumented. There's students like me, and I have a voice. I'm privileged, I have citizenship, and I'm being their voice today. And lastly, you are my representatives, and as my representatives, you are my voice for what has to be done in this city. Thank you.
Thank you.[1707.26][1707.26](audience cheering) Pat, followed by Mike Woods, followed by James Riley.
Good evening. I'm a proud resident of the Birdland neighborhood, living on Bobalink, where SB 54 keeps my neighborhood and community safe. It's sad to see John Anguillera is not here today. I'd like to read to you guys from the Declaration of Independence. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by the Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Too often, that definition of 'men' does not seem to be self-evident. History has judged every narrowing of this definition to be wrong. When it means white men, that is wrong. When it means men and not women, that is wrong. When it excludes Japanese-American citizens, that was wrong. Regardless of the support for these narrow definitions, history will judge any narrowing of the definition of the word 'men' to be wrong. Wrong is still wrong, even if everyone supports it. Right is right, even if no one does. It is right that immigrants to this country are endowed by their Creator with those unalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Federal immigration law is broken, so California should not defer to the federal government to do what is right for California. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness are found in schools, hospitals, courthouses, and this city council meeting today. Supporting SB 54, the California Values Act, is right. Those against it will be..." Those against it will be judged by history to be wrong, regardless of the political support you may receive. Do what is right. What California knows is right, what our founders know is right. Protect the unalienable rights of all our men as defined as broadly as possible, including our immigrant families. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are you Mike Woods?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mike Woods, followed by James Riley, followed by Michelle Gomez.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Mike Woods, and I am a seven-year resident of Vista and a 12-year resident of the North County. I am also a retired LA Sheriff's Lieutenant and a Team Adam Consultant for the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. I have over 45 years of law enforcement experience, and I feel that I can speak from firsthand knowledge of the very delicate and extremely critical need for an effective and trusting two-way communication mechanism between the members of the community and the Sheriff's Department. I would like to remind the council of two very important points that need to be considered regarding this issue of the poorly worded concept of sanctuary cities. These points have nothing to do with politics, they're not Republican, or Democrat, or Liberal, or Conservative. These points are what it means to our city of Vista. First of all, effective law enforcement is built on the foundation of earned trust between the deputies who enforce California and US law and every resident of Vista who deserves and counts on those deputies to provide a safe and peaceful place to live. As in any relationship, if that trust is violated, or even perceived to be less than a mutual 100% effort, that foundation crumbles. If the residents of Vista begin to feel that this city council does not fully support and represent them, or takes a position that in some way is undercutting the trust that we need between community and our deputies, you will be setting an unpleasant and potentially dangerous precedent. Second point, we expect every one of our hard-working deputies to enforce the laws of the city of Vista and the state of California with impartiality and uniformity. We do not need, or want, or pay our taxes for them to enforce immigration laws that are the responsibility of the federal government, not the state government, and definitely not the city government. I regret that Washington created a problem that didn't exist, and that our state legislators had to pass SB 54, but I implore the Vista City Council to not become part of the problem and not alienate our residents by opposing SB 54. Please consider supporting this act for the sake of our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. James Riley, I don't see James. Does he hear? James Riley, did he go home? Okay, Michelle Gomez, followed by Elizabeth Warren, followed by Shiloh Strawbridge.
Hi. Hi, good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Michelle Gomez, and I'm an Oceanside resident. The purpose of SB 54, the California Values Act, is to protect the safety and well-being of Californians by ensuring that the state and local resources are not used for mass deportations, separating families, and ultimately hurting California's economy. Here in Vista, immigrants are a vital part of our families and our communities. The California Values Act ensures that police, schools, hospitals, libraries, and courts remain accessible to all Californians by preventing state and local law enforcement agencies and school police and security departments from engaging in immigration enforcement. Instilling fear in our immigrant communities will result in decreased reporting of crime. We've heard this many times here tonight. When immigrants are too afraid to report crimes because of their deportation fears, everyone's safety suffers, including all of yours. Law enforcement associations throughout the state have stated that local law enforcement agencies depend on the cooperation of immigrants in solving a wide array of crimes. I offer you these factual examples. Immigrant farmworkers came forward to provide information during a high-profile 2012 investigation and the murder of a teenage girl who disappeared on her way to school. In this case, the Santa Clara County Sheriff stated, and I quote, "Had they feared that my office would question their immigration status or the status of their loved ones, it is very unlikely they would have come forward." And Los Angeles Police Chief Beck reported that increased deportation fears have contributed to the dramatic drop in Latinos reporting sexual assault and domestic violence cases. Specifically, 25% fewer cases of sexual assault were reported, and 10% fewer domestic violence cases were reported in the prior year. When local law enforcement and sheriffs act as deportation agents, that further undermines trust and confidence within the community. People are less likely to report crime when victims and witnesses fear that they may be deported, when they encounter law enforcement. It has been mentioned many times here tonight, but I'll mention it again, it should be noted that Sheriff Gore strongly supports the California Values Act. This city council has historically supported and praised Gore's policies. We ask you that you continue to consider Gore's decision in this matter. We ask you that you consider joining other cities, such as Chula Vista and National City, in passing resolutions in support of the California's Values Act. Doing so will ensure the safety of all Vista residents, including yourselves and your families. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Warren, followed by Shiloh, followed by Melinda Nieto.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council and everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Elizabeth Warren, and I am here as someone hoping to represent the city of Vista in the State Assembly, and for that reason, I'd like to address something different that hasn't been discussed tonight. I'd like to talk about the legal implications of the city of Vista siding, you know, with the federal government. Cities, states, and the federal government each have their roles in governance. For the most part, it works as long as everybody stays in their lane. If Vista joins with other cities in adopting these politically polarizing resolutions, I fear that it will erode the right of our state in the future to push back when federal government oversteps its authority, or challenges our right to adopt laws to clarify the role of state and federal government. I won't speak to the substance of SB 54, because I think many others have done so very eloquently already. But what I'd like to talk about is, however you feel about this particular law, we can't afford to have our cities break with the state, even symbolically and support the federal challenge. It puts us on a very slippery slope from a separation of power standpoint. States must be able to assert our sovereignty. It puts our rights, freedoms, and resources in peril to be taken from us at the whim of the federal government, which could run roughshod over us at any time. And I'd like to talk a little bit about, you know, what you voted on earlier. We had a consideration of housing, and we were talking about whether or not we're going to have a three-story building. Suppose the federal government decided that we have a real housing crisis nationwide, and to achieve greater density, we needed to build five-story housing complexes all along the shoreline. Would you side with them on something like that? We really need to protect California's right to assert our sovereignty, let the federal government do what it's supposed to do, and have our cities do what we're supposed to do. And by the way, you're doing a great job. I was a volunteer when we talked to the city businesses and how they were dealing with the transportation, you know, challenges while we were doing the repairs, and I was very excited to hear that there, a lot of them are thriving, and they're coming up with really creative solutions. So thank you, Vista, for doing a great job of protecting the city, and I hope that you'll continue to do that and protect the state as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Shiloh, followed by Melinda Nieto, followed by Cipriano Vargas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council members. I'm Shiloh Strawbridge. I live in zip code 92083. I have two kids in the Vista Unified School District. We love it. And I'm a member of my school's parent-teacher organization. And I'm here to support the California Values Act and to support Vista. My family moved to Vista seven years ago, and honestly, I came kicking and screaming for insinuate this. But man, I sure didn't know, and I tell everybody, don't come here, because it's way too cool. I don't want to share. No. I love my neighbors. I love my community. I love this town. And I'm frustrated that this issue's even coming up, but I'm proud of my community for everything we're saying tonight. I look at all the council members, and I see my neighbors. I see people I've shaken hands with. I see Mayor Ritter. You met my kids, you gave them toys at our school's Dia Festival, right after you read the proclamation that declared April 30th Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros, or Children's Day, Book Day, in Vista. It was awesome. And I looked at.
I gave them Hatchimals. Hatchimals.
Yeah, they love the Hatchimals. They fight over them, but they love them. Thank you. And John Franklin, I looked at your website, and I see that you have the same love for Vista that I do, that you chose to move here the same reasons that I did, that your wife, on your website, you say, "My wife and I chose Vista because of the sense of community we found here, because of the people we're proud to call friends and neighbors." So am I. I love this town. Franklin, your site says that a balanced budget is a moral obligation for our city, and I agree. We have limited resources. Please don't waste them on a lawsuit that makes no sense. Franklin says, "Your priority is public safety, and so is mine." I've got two young children. I love this city because we trust our neighbors, they trust us. Everything that I see about this town are things that we're doing right, and I want us to continue down that path. The California Values Act keeps us safe. It allows police to focus on high-priority crime and to collaborate with everyone in the community so that there are no blind spots. So we all have so much in common here. We're all neighbors, and when I moved here, one of my neighbors welcomed me with blackberry pie from her own garden, and another welcomed me with tamales that she'd made herself. I think that exemplifies my favorite thing about Vista. It's welcoming, it's safe, it's neighborly. Please keep it that way.
Thank you. Melinda Nieto? Yes? Followed by Cipriano Vargas, followed by Rosa Flores.
Hi, my name's Melinda, and I'm in support of keeping the California Values Act, and I am a Vista resident. I've been here in Vista for quite a while, over half my life. I also went to school here. And I ask you to please stop the terrorist organization ICE, which is separating families for profit. Prisons like GEO are making profits by gauging people up. And that's, I'm just in support of SB 54. My family, I have, my family's immigrant, so I make this a welcoming city, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Cipriano Vargas, followed by Rosa Flores, followed by Jonathan Gomez.
Good evening, mayor, council members, staff members. One clarifying question, is our new captain in here?
Probably not, maybe not now.
All right. Well, I do hope he's listening, because we're having a conversation on SB 54, and part of the conversation and the continuing topic that keeps coming back is public safety. And we have members that have spoken about needs in our community, real needs that this city council can address. I'm here standing before you in support of the California Values Act, because I believe our law enforcement should be here to protect and serve. Do we have issues in the city of Vista? Absolutely. Mayor, I've been to your state of the city address for the last two years. You talk about how crime has been going down. That's a fact on your PowerPoint. Now, when it comes to SB 54, I do hope that it is not being used as a tactic for political points. I do hope that you have paid attention to what members of our community have been stating. Our own sheriff has stated that he supports the California Values Act. In the Vista Unified School District, we have done safety forums, and nowhere in these forums was SB 54 one of the concerns. One of the concerns was actually on gun safety, which is a different topic that we're not discussing tonight. And, you know, there's limited things that as a local municipality that we can do on that matter, but there are real issues that we can do, or real issues that we can solve in our community. I don't think we disagree when we say we want safety communities. I think that's a common goal for our community. I think we want to make it a better place, and so let's find that common ground. I'm disappointed that we have to spend two-plus hours tonight talking about SB 54. Rather than being reactive, let's be proactive. I can assure you that many people in the public would be happy to have a workshop on public safety. We have a new captain. Captain Cinemo is no longer with us. We have some relationships to build with our law enforcement. They are not the enemy. We are not the enemy. This is our community. Let's make it fair. Let's make it equitable. Let's make sure this is a place where we're all happy to live, and let's welcome our immigrant brothers and sisters. Thank you.
I don't see Rosa Flores. Does she go home, maybe? Okay, so then Jonathan Gomez, followed by Harold Zeroff, followed by Flor Alvarez. Hi.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Jonathan Gomez. I'm a Vista resident for five years. I'm a son of a Cuban refugee. My family fully intended to go back to Cuba, but they could not, unfortunately, and they stayed in America for a love of the US democracy. Okay? I've worked in education, higher ed, for over 13 years, and I'll speak to you from my experience with my students, or our students, right? When a family member is detained in an immigrant family, that pulls a student out of school, because that student now has to work to support their family, whether it be the mother or father, and siblings, okay? So that's a reality we face. We've had permanent residents detained by ICE, students that are permanent residents, just taken out of their front lawn, their kids left there, and, you know, for no good reason, okay? So this is just intolerable. I will not stand for it. You cannot have it both ways. You cannot have immigrants paying taxes, paying sales tax, patronizing local businesses, and then not being willing to say that this is a sanctuary, right? Whether you agree with the term or not, you know, what it means is that you're in support of dignity and humanity. And so at the college, we struggle with this, too. We tell our students, yes, this is a safe place for you, but we're not willing to say it's sanctuary, right? So you can't have that go both ways. You can't say we welcome immigrants, but not be willing to be bold like our California leaders that created SB 54. So obviously, I'm here in support of that, and I thank them for being bold leaders, and I ask that the city of Vista understand that in terms of safety, we pay extra taxes to ensure that there's safety here. I do not want my taxpayer money spent for profit prisons, for detention, for harassing my community members, okay? I do not want my taxpayer money to go to that. I will not stand for it. I will exercise my right to vote and make sure that my community is opposed to those that oppose SB 54, and I ask that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Harold Zeroff, and then followed by Flor Alvarez.
I'm a child of an immigrant. My mother came here during the Russian Revolution, during the pogroms, and she has told me this story many times that has really upset me. She lived in a small town outside of Kiev. Her father, my grandfather, was the head rabbi at the time. At that time, the Red Russians were fighting the White Russians, and one day, the White Russians came into their little town. My mother and her sister were in the basement. My grandfather was standing outside, protecting his family, the head rabbi. One of the White Russians came up with a horse, took out his gun, walked over to him, grabbed his beard, and put a bullet through his head. My mother and her sister were in the basement, and they actually witnessed this. She has told me this many times. So when I hear the stories about the families, the children in Honduras and El Salvador, I certainly can have empathy and understanding for them. My grandfather, in order to allay their fears during this period, his favorite saying to my mother and the family was, "God will provide." Unfortunately, that day that he was shot, God did not provide. And unfortunately, God... And unfortunately, God isn't working in Honduras or El Salvador as well. Interestingly enough, you, people sitting at this platform, can actually become the God to provide for some of these immigrants. Think about that statement. You could be their salvation from this terrible thing that's happening in Central America. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next is Flor Alvarez. And that's our last speaker.
Hello. I would take my hat off, but my messy hair would be a little bit more disrespectful. I would wear my shirt correctly, but I wasn't allowed in the meeting with it. I also asked for the captain, but I was told he had more important issues to tend to. My name is Flor Alvarez, and I'm a North County resident. I work and volunteer in Vista on a daily basis. I'm one of the directors of Universidad Popular, also known as the People's University. We are also in the business of finding community solutions and transformation. Dr. Nunez Alvarez left off with the introduction of the Community Security Peacekeeper Team. We are trained in de-escalation and cultural responsiveness, known as competency. As one of the security leads and trainers, you might want to contact me to train your deputies on de-escalation and cultural responsiveness. As we take pride in protecting all the community, all our community members, regardless of their political beliefs, race, sex, sexual orientation, and creed, we were denied access with our security shirts. Many of them, many of us on the team are also Vista residents. When our communities trust us more than your deputies, there's an issue. Universidad Popular's security team, peacekeepers, supports SB 54, the California Values Act. Thank you.
Okay, now, listen. Okay, now, we've been very respectful of you, and so, when we talk, we expect you to be respectful of us. Okay? Or I'm gonna—I'll call a break, and we'll take another break. So, I—we're gonna go, and we're gonna—the council's gonna talk, you know, you guys are done, and so, please be quiet and be respectful as we were of you. Okay? Deal? Okay. All right, so, I'll start with Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to begin by addressing a few important points. Several months ago, when this issue first came to our attention about the ability to join with an amicus brief, it was discussed that there was very limited time remaining to sign on to an amicus brief. And that, as we passed that deadline, caused us to think we had missed the opportunity for our cities and our citizens' voices to be heard, until it occurred to me that this is gonna go to the appellate court, and then it's gonna go to the Supreme Court. Almost certainly, this issue would be heard by the Supreme Court. So, we have at least two more opportunities over what's probably at least a year from today going forward to join in some of these amicus briefs and express our opposition to the California Values Act. I want to tell you why I oppose the California Values Act. First and foremost, the value of tolerating someone who is the breaker of the law, who has committed dangerous felonious crimes, and to say that of a person who did not possess the legal right to be President of the United States, that we should not remove somebody from this country who has committed dangerous crimes, I think is abhorrent. And I think the research and the statistics demonstrate that the people of California, in some polls, as many as 70% oppose this legislation. I think locally, it's more. The California Values Act implies that there is no value of U.S. citizenship. It rejects the idea that immigration to the United States is a privilege, which is granted to those who want to be a citizen, want to be a part of the fabric of our nation, want to abide by our nation's laws. It is entirely appropriate that those individuals who would like to become citizens of the United States should conduct themselves in compliance with our nation's laws, particularly with regard to felonious crimes and misdemeanor crimes, crimes of a serious nature. And I think what's most important about the idea of whether or not this law positively or negatively impacts public safety. Right now, there are 11,600 felons that are eligible for deportation in California's prisons. And this law will interfere with the ability of state and local officials to deliver those individuals to the Immigration and Customs Enforcement to deport them from the country. I cannot square that returning hundreds of dangerous criminals to the streets of the city of Vista is, in fact, in the best interest of the people of Vista, particularly not when they most likely have victimized the exact communities which we are discussing protecting here tonight. I did not start this conversation. I absolutely did not. The legislature—
Okay. If you do that, I'm gonna call a break, and we'll go for another 10 minutes. We'll go for 10 minutes. We're not gonna have you guys yelling from the audience. That's—the decorum. We were patient with you, and you be patient with us, please.
Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to speak to an empty chamber if that's what's necessary to maintain decorum. My remarks are directed to you, my colleagues, and to all the people of the city of Vista. There are other citizens of the city of Vista that I represent that are not sitting here tonight, and I am their voice, and I will speak to represent them. I would ask for order.
I'm looking at them, and I'm very close to calling a recess again.
The comment was made that the—that our actions tonight potentially nullify the process of representative government and intervene with the people and their elected officials. The reality is that the state legislature took it upon themselves to enter in an area of law that is expressly reserved for the federal government by the Constitution of the United States of America. The state of California does not possess the authority. This act is inherently unconstitutional. And I would point, among other clauses of the Constitution, to the prerogative of the Congress and the federal government to establish a uniform rule of naturalization. The Constitution also says that the United States, in every state, shall guarantee a republican form of government and shall protect each of them against invasion. The idea of establishing a uniform rule and expecting the law to be enforced in an equal fashion is absolutely appropriate. And if we decide we don't like that law, then we should petition our representatives in Congress to change those laws, not decide at the state, or frankly, at the city level, that we don't like those laws. We swore an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the laws of the United States of America, and the Constitution and laws of the state of California. However, when those things are in conflict, it's incumbent upon us to examine the question of law and to decide which law actually has precedence. The Constitution says that the Constitution of the United States of America and all the laws made pursuant thereto shall be the supreme law of the land. Federal law trumps state law on this item 100%. It is unquestioned. The state does not have the prerogative or the right to interfere with the enforcement of federal law or to change the prerogatives of local law enforcement to cooperate. We had—going back nine, 10 years ago, we had wonderful partnerships with the U.S. Attorney's Office, with DEA, with ICE. And really, I want to talk about what didn't get said here tonight, and I wish that it had been. I wish there was care and concern for the fact that Immigration and Customs is now conducting workplace enforcement in large quantities, in large numbers here in Vista. I personally have been contacted by employers, some of whom reached out to me and told me that employees that they'd had for 15 years had disappeared at the hint of an immigration enforcement action without any trace, people they had formed long relationships with. Previously, ICE had been stationed in our county jails and had been deporting only dangerous criminals directly from our jails, and this consumed the bulk of their time and resources. Having been cast out by the California Values Act of our prison system and our jails, they now have no ready source of individuals to deport, and so, they've taken it upon themselves, at the direction of the president, to find those who are in violation of our immigration laws. And so, they have gone, instead of deporting those who are criminals, they're deporting individuals who very much fit the ethic of people we would want in our country. Madam Mayor, do we have order?
Okay.
Do we have order?
We can't have a meeting with you doing this. You don't even know where I stand on this thing, but do you think putting those things in my—you're yelling at me, and that would change my mind? We listened to all of—we listened to all of you. Maybe some people didn't agree with you, but we didn't interrupt what you were saying. He—he—we can't have a meeting like this. We can't have a meeting with you talking like this, so— Okay, okay, wait. Stop, stop.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's a break right now, so they're ramping, but when we let them know we're under meeting, if they can behave themselves, we can finish. If not, we're gonna have to clear the chambers, and I think they'll respect that.
You really do?
We can say it. We can give them a shot. Give them a shot.
Okay, we're on a break right now? If you guys can behave and be quiet, we'll continue our meeting. If you won't, then we can't continue our meeting. So, what—it's up to you. You want to continue and listen to—you have to listen to all sides. We listen to all sides. You have to listen to all sides.
And Madam Mayor, before we—if I could have the opportunity to say something really quick, is that okay, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go for it.
Okay. I just want to let you guys know exactly what's happening right now, is if you continue to talk, we're gonna clear the chamber, and we're gonna complete the meeting without any of you hearing or having any input at all. Right now, we're on a break, so we haven't cleared the chamber yet. The second the mayor says this meeting is back in session, you have to maintain decorum, or the chamber will be cleared, and we'll be here, and we'll finish it without you in the room. So, I would prefer, and I think you guys would probably prefer, to stay in the room. So, if we could please just, you know, anything you want to do quietly while we all, you know, hash this out and try to make progress for our city would be greatly appreciated. So, thank you for that, and with that—
Okay, shall we call the meeting back to order? Okay, meeting is back in order, and Councilmember Franklin is going to continue.
I believe it is our duty to act on behalf of the vast majority of the people of Vista that are not in this room tonight, to stand up for what they feel are their values, to stand up for law and for order, to stand up for the rule of law. I believe it is important what we as a city do and what position we take. I would like to offer a motion to resolve that the California Values Act is inconsistent with the values of the people of Vista, and that the city of Vista supports the position of the United States of America in the Department of Justice v. California, and in the California Attorney General v. the United States Department of Commerce. Again, I'll repeat that. I'd like to offer a motion that the city council be resolved that the California Values Act is inconsistent with the values of the people of Vista, and that the city of Vista supports the position of the United States of America in the Department of Justice v. California and California Attorney General v. U.S. Department of Commerce. Those are the cases that are currently litigating SB 54. I think it is important that the rule of law is restored, and as the legislature has decided to be lawless and pass laws that are unconstitutional, it is incumbent upon every elected official at every level of government in this state to stand up for what is right and what is just and what is legal and what is constitutional. Mob rule will not rule our city. Mob rule will not rule our state. I will not be shouted down. I will not cower to people who want to disrupt the decorum of our chamber. The rule of law establishes a hierarchy of laws, and the federal government and the Constitution is supreme in these issues. I would ask that you second my motion and that you approve my motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to all of you who are here tonight to voice your opinion. It is valuable that we hear your opinion, and I appreciate you being here. And I appreciate you showing us the same kindness and respect that we showed you during the last two hours of public comment. So, thank you. I wanted to also read—I have a copy of SB 54 right here with me, in my hot little hands, and I wanted to read a provision from it as well that we have not heard tonight. Existing law provides that whenever an individual who is a victim of or a witness to a crime or who otherwise can give evidence in a hate crime investigation is not charged with or convicted of committing any crime under state law, a peace officer may not detain the individual exclusively for any actual or suspected immigration violation, or report or turn the individual over to federal immigration authorities. That's existing law. Protecting immigrants from immigration authorities just on the basis of their immigration status, they're already protected when they want to report a crime or be witness in court for a crime. That law was passed in California many years ago. And some of you might remember when we would drive from San Diego to Orange County, there is the checkpoint, the Border Patrol checkpoint there. When that disappeared, that was at the same time that that law passed. SB 54 did not enshrine those protections for our immigrants. Those were already in place, and there is nothing that stops that. There's nothing that takes away from that. So, there should be no fear, and I'm sad to hear from our community representatives— So there should be no fear, and I'm sad to hear from our community representatives, that we have... Excuse me, I'm talking right now, you had an opportunity to speak. We will clear these chambers. It's my turn. Those provisions have not changed, and I am sad to hear that there are people in the community who think that they are at risk of being deported simply because of their immigration status, because that is not what the current state law says. So what SB 54 does say is that local, or county, or state officers cannot work in collaboration with our federal government to take criminals from our justice system once they are released and deport them back to their country of origin. And that is where we come into the conflict here, as Councilwoman Franklin stated. We have to have, because we have local, we have state, we have federal jurisdictions in one geographic area, we have to have a collaborative effort to maintain the public safety for our community, and that's what this is about. As you have all talked about, public safety is important. It is absolutely paramount to our communities. And so what we are opposed to is when criminals are released from jail, back onto our streets, instead of being released to the federal authorities to be sent back to their country of origin. That's the opposition here to this. So I agree with Councilman... Pardon me, Councilwoman Franklin, and I will second your motion.
Councilmember Green.
All right. Thank you guys all for showing up. I was wondering the same thing you were. Why is this on my agenda? I had no clue. When Councilman Franklin started the conversation today, you said you wanted to hear from our community, and that was it. You didn't say, "I wanted to hear from my council members about jumping on an amicus brief" or anything like that, you just wanted to hear from the community. I'm here to tell you that 38 Vista residents showed up, and 10 non-Vista residents showed up, all in support of SB 54. No residents showed up in opposition of SB 54. And if this was such a hot pressing issue in Vista by all these hidden people, I have no clue where they are. I live in Vista just like you, I talk to citizens of Vista just like you, please don't clap or make noise, it's not necessary. But I live in Vista just like you, and I have not been pressured by Vistans to file an amicus brief. Actually, quite the opposite, is when they heard Escondido did it, they were like, "Oh my gosh, I hope Vista doesn't do the same thing." I initially was so anti-sanctuary cities, and when you say the word, it is a little scary, but when you read through SB 54, which I did thoroughly, and I highlighted it a lot, so I've read every single line of it as well, there are several crimes there that people are still being prosecuted for, and if somebody's being released from a felony after they've served 10, 15 years in our prisons, you know, that is a flaw in our system, and possibly a flaw in SB 54, but what does that have to do with Vista? And what does this benefit Vista? So I'm really upset, hopefully, you see, I'm mad, I'm really upset. I have no reason for this to be on my agenda right now. I have no reason to file an amicus brief, I refuse to. So I'm adamantly opposed to that. Forty-one percent of residents in the City of Vista speak a language other than English at home. There's 23,000 immigrants within our city. I was the one who met with our city about a welcoming city initiative, and I helped draft this welcoming city resolution, which I thought was great, but I thought that we didn't have the support on the council, and I wanted to take my council's feelings into consideration, because they're extremely conservative Republicans, some of them, and although this is a nonpartisan office, it seems that partisan politics has played into this, and it's extremely upsetting to me. I was not elected by a Republican Party, I was not endorsed by a Republican Party, I was elected by Vista, I signed up to represent Vista, and I'm not a state representative, I'm not a federal representative, I'm a Vista representative. And I think by having 48 Vista residents, or 38 Vista residents, 10 non-Vista residents, all not for us filing an amicus brief, not even one of your friends showed up, man, not two, not three, not four, not five, none of them showed up. And I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just trying to do my job. And my job is to listen to the citizens of Vista, and there was an amendment to the Constitution about states' rights, and... But this is a federal issue, and I kind of get your saying on it, but we're not federal representatives, I'm not a state representative, I'm a Vista representative. This does nothing for me but cause divisiveness within my city, it doesn't do anything to encourage a welcoming atmosphere, it doesn't do anything to encourage love. The Bible, if you guys all want to get Christian, says, "The greatest of all of these is love." Just love, man. And I don't feel like this has anything to do with love, I feel like it puts, you know, me, your fellow council members, your citizens, all in a very bad position, to where they have to show up and yell at us for something that serves absolutely no purpose at all, in my opinion. So this is a discussion item, I know you made a motion, I know we'll be voting on it, but from a standpoint of a dude who's lived in Vista his whole life, since 1983, I was five years old, East Los Angeles street, I'm a product of government programs, welfare, powdered milk, government cheese, raised by a single mom, I mean, I believe in our government, and I believe in the state of California, that's why I live here, it's the greatest state in the entire country, and I believe that we are on the tip of the spear with a lot of things. And there's other things you guys don't support that the state of California supports that I support as well. So we obviously are on totally opposite sides on this one. I'm super upset that it was on the agenda, I wish there was a way that, you know, we didn't have to bring this forward, because I don't think it serves a purpose for my community, other than really driving a wedge between me and the two of you right now. And I don't like it, and I think it was not well-planned. So you need direction from me, there's my direction. I'm mad, and I am totally against this. Thank you, please don't applaud.
Well, I have notes here, too. So I didn't want this brought, because I think it's a divisive issue for our city, that's what I thought, and I believe immigration is a federal issue, I need our health service representatives and our Senate to fix this issue. I think it's not up to our local and state police officers, our sheriffs are not immigration officials, they should be able to do their duties and keep our community safe, but 38 of 100,000, 100, what, 2,000 people, is, you know, that's a good representative, but I'm the mayor of the whole city, I'm your mayor, and I'm also mayor of people who don't agree with you. I sit in the middle here. So, but with that said, I don't want immigration agents in our neighborhoods, I wrote some of this down so I won't forget, but I don't want ICE knocking on people's doors and going into Vista businesses, you know, like has been reported, I don't want them rounding up in the transit center, I understand they went into one of the transit centers, they rounded people up, I think that's wrong. But I think that if we are a sanctuary city, it's worse for your community, and all of you, it's worse than this SB 54, because ICE will come into the neighborhoods and find the criminals, they're gonna come in, and when they, you know, knock on a door to find a criminal, whoever's there, they're gonna arrest anybody there who's illegal. So, and this is the thing, many families have American citizens, and they have legal immigrants, and they have illegal immigrants, all in the same family, in the same place. So it's a huge problem, I get that. So, but I don't want ICE to go into business and then round people up in the business and go through there like they have in one of our Vista businesses, that's a problem, too. So I think President Trump is trying to make a point, and he's going to push his point, and that's one of the reasons he's sending ICE into these places. I think if we were not a sanctuary city, then, or whatever we're gonna call it, if we weren't that, then I think that he wouldn't, then I think that that wouldn't be so much of a point in our city, it might be more of a point in other cities who are sanctuary cities. I think we're better not to be one, that's my thing. So, and I also don't want to harbor criminals, and I think, you know, who feel like they are safe in our cities, you know, so I think that that's wrong. So what I really want is for Congress to fix this mess, I think that it's up to them, there's nothing we can do here locally in Vista, there really is nothing that we can do here. I support University de la Popular, I think they're doing a great job, I think that they, you know, they're working to help legal immigrants become citizens that have been legal immigrants for years, that haven't been citizens, and I think that's a good thing, I think that they're doing a good job over there. So, but I also think there's a lot of bad information out there, I think you guys, you know, some of the information you're giving me is bad information, that I, you know, that I hear. So, anyway, so I'm... I don't... Did you push your button again? Oh, okay. So, anyway, so I'm in the middle, I am your mayor, and I, but I'm also the mayor of other people who don't agree with you, and so I, you know, I'm telling you kind of how I feel, so that's kind of where I am. So I'll go back to Joe.
No problem. And I also have those same friends that don't agree with you as well, and there's a lot on both sides, but when it comes to the majority of the Vista population, I do feel like the majority of Vistans, and when you look at the breakdown, Republicans, Democrats, independents, basically, 2/3 of our population isn't Democrat or Republican, because you have such a big, you know, decline to state in the middle, you know, and what do all those people want, you know? It's not about Republican or Democrat, it's about Vista. And what I would pose to the mayor, and I, you know, if there was another council member here, Councilmember Regulera, is as opposed to filing an amicus brief, saying, "Hey, we're against the sanctuary city thing," maybe saying that we're open to being a welcoming city, and joining the cohort of welcoming cities, and, you know, working with different welcoming cities, as opposed to saying it's a sanctuary city, because the sanctuary is the bad word everybody seems to have. And, you know, as saying that we're welcoming to immigrants, and we offer, you know, programs, which we do, all the stuff that, you know, our community is asking us to state are really things that we already do, they're things that our Sheriff's Department already supports, they would rather us make a statement saying, "Hey, you know, we are welcoming," I mean, we are welcoming, we are welcoming. If an immigrant comes into City Hall, we're not gonna question him about his immigration status and, you know, deport him, but that's kind of the word on the street. If we as a body don't make some type of statement and say, "Hey, you know, this is the type of city we are," because, you know, from a sanctuary city standpoint, it sounds like a horrible, you know, thing for our community because of all of the attachments that go with it, all of the negative connotations. And, you know, we are a sanctuary state, there's no, SB 54 is a law, so no matter what we say, that doesn't change the state law, but what we really need to do is just let our community know that, "Hey, we appreciate you showing up, we're behind you," and, you know, we're not gonna do that. So, but I would say welcoming city, in my opinion, a welcoming city resolution would be a more positive approach, as opposed to just, you know, jumping on the bandwagon with other cities, so...
That's divisive, too, and the same thing, and I don't welcome criminals, you know, that are welcome in sanctuary cities, criminals are, feel like it's a safe place that they can be, and so I don't, I don't, I don't think that, I think that's also divisive to be a welcoming city. So I'll go back to Councilmember Franklin.
I just want to close by saying that I don't particularly relish being in the middle of this fight. I did ask to put it on the agenda together with Councilwoman Rigby, because I believe that it is imperative that we stand up and be leaders. We were elected to be leaders, our state legislature took an action which was not their purview, which was in violation of the Constitution, and therefore, I think it's incumbent for every elected leader in California to stand up and say, "Enough's enough, we're not going to be a lawless people, we're not going to be a lawless state, we're not going to be a lawless city." Laws are the only thing, laws and civility are the only thing that separate us from a violent, disorganized society. Laws and our ability to have discourse, though we might disagree with one another, and let this be a lesson for all those engaged in the study of civics. In America, we settle our differences by talking and listening to one another, we don't have to like what the other party says, we don't have to agree with it, but if we endeavor to shout them down, and to drown them out, and to quell the freedom of their speech, then what option is left to a man or a woman who has not the right of free speech? That is a question that should be studied by all interested in our democracy and our republic. That is vital, okay? And respect for the institutions of government can start right here. This is an institution of government, we were duly elected to represent the views of our constituents, and we were duly elected not to represent the views of only those individuals who came to speak before us, but of all of the people of Vista. And that is my duty, and that is the charge I will execute. And so I'm asking you to join with me in speaking up on behalf of the vast majority of the people that we were elected to represent, and standing up on behalf of what is in fact right, which is the rule of law, order, civility, the structure of our society as a nation. That's what I'm asking that we do as leaders on behalf of the people we represent tonight, and that's why I'd ask you to vote yes on the resolution that I've offered.
But isn't the Supreme Court, eventually this will go to the Supreme Court, they're the ones to make the final decision, this is a federal issue, it's not really our state issue, I mean, it's not really our city issue, you know, so I don't understand, I guess, why...
The state chose to involve itself in a federal issue, and I'm saying that it's incumbent upon us to stand up as leaders at the city level, and I think it's incumbent upon those on the Water Board, and those on the County Board of Supervisors who have already taken action, and those on the Board of Equalization, and the Water Quality Control Board, and any individual who has a voice in this system, in this democracy, should stand up, and if nothing else, we ought to, and really, the crux of what I believe, and the reason that I'm so passionate about this, is truly about the rule of law. Our society is devolving into disorder and mob rule because we are not enforcing the laws, and this really comes down to whether or not we as a people will enforce the laws, and whether we will stand up and say to our state legislature, who has thumbed its nose at the U.S. Constitution, and we will say, "This is wrong, and we lend our voices to those who demand the return of the rule of law." That's what this is about, and I think it is important. I think it's important for us as municipal leaders to be involved. I think it's important, we are leaders in our community, and if not us to stand up for this, then who?
I guess I agree with you, I mean, I totally agree with you, but I also know that there is another half of our society here in Vista, of our city, 53% Hispanic right now, another half that disagrees with you, so we have to represent our city as a whole, you know, not just the part that, you know, just not that part, I think we have to agree, you know, both, we have to think, take into consideration both sides. So that's why I'm having such an issue with it, because I think I represent all of them as well as the people of the other side.
It's my considered belief, based on what I know about public research that's been done on this issue, that a large majority of Californians, of San Diego Countyans, of Vistans, in fact, oppose sanctuary state and sanctuary city policies. They are overwhelmingly unpopular, the research has routinely...
But Sheriff Gore supports this, and he was erected by all the Republican...
That's actually completely false. I've read every, I've read every public statement...
Let us have a discussion.
I have read every public statement that the sheriff has made, the sheriff has made his best effort to be neutral, he made one comment when asked by a reporter what he thought about the San Diego County Board of Supervisors involving themselves in the amicus brief, and he said, "I wouldn't advise them to do that if I were them." He didn't think that the board should entangle itself in the controversy, the board fortunately saw it as their duty to involve themselves and to stand up and be heard, and the sheriff later reconsidered his remark and withdrew it. But it is not the fact, in fact, the sheriff, on his press release, be more than happy to read it to you if you'd like to hear it, the sheriff has issued a press release on SB 54, and nowhere in it, in which he states his official position, and nowhere in it does he say that he favors or endorses this law. And he has made no statement to that effect in any public forum. So if he's made it in private in a room I wasn't in and didn't hear, I can't speak to that, but I have spoken to the sheriff personally on many occasions, and often, this was a subject of conversation. He never availed himself of the opportunity to say, "You know, I support that law," and never, when asked by the newspaper reporters numerous times about this issue, and after he first spoke on the issue, he was subsequently repeatedly asked to state his opinion, to the point where he needed to put out a clarifying press release, and at no point did he say that he was supportive of the legislation itself. His press release actually goes on to just simply state the facts of the issue, and is completely neutral. He's not taken a position opposing it, and he's not taken a position in favor of it. That's the fact.
Well, I also know that he follows it because it's the law, and he follows the law of the state, I believe, right now, so, I don't know, it's, it's, this is a really sticky issue here, I mean, it's tough, because I, you know, I feel like I said, I actually agree with you, I actually agree with you, but I also know that there's people on the other side that...
I would just ask if our highest calling is to the law of the state of California, or if it's in fact to the Constitution of the United States of America, which prescribes that all of the laws made pursuant to the Constitution are the supreme law of the land. It's very plain language written to be understood by all of us, it's clear and unambiguous, this is the realm of the federal government. This is about controlling and protecting our national borders, and as I read from the Constitution, establishing a uniform rule of naturalization. That means the federal government has absolute purview to make the rules about who can and who cannot immigrate, and in what circumstances that they can be deported.
I agree with that, and I don't, I don't agree with an open border, I agree we need to have rules that people, you know, come into, you know, they need to, but it, but it isn't us, it's the, it's the federal government that needs to change it, the Congress needs to get on this problem, and it's getting bigger all the time, so, anyway. Okay, I will call for the vote. And the vote is to, yeah, read it again, please.
Let me restate, it's a resolution of the City Council, resolve that the California Values Act is inconsistent with the values of the people of Vista, and that the City of Vista supports the position of the United States of America in the Department of Justice v. California, and California Attorney General v. United States Department of Commerce. v. California, and California Attorney General v. United States Department of Commerce.
So, that passes two yeses, one no, and I actually abstained, because I represent all of the city. I'm the mayor of the whole city, so...
Does the mayor, Mr. City Attorney, does the measure fail?
I think it passes.
No, the measure passes.
It does? Okay.
Boo, coward, coward, coward!
Madam Mayor, we're still in session. Can we have decorum in the chamber? Can we have order in the chamber, so we can finish our meeting? Can we have decorum in the chamber? Madam Mayor, can we have order in the chamber?
You have to put your hands up.
Just let them go? Till they get out of here?
Madam Mayor, we're still in session. Can we please have order in the chamber?
I need to call for order, but they won't hear me. We need to have order in the chamber.
Vote for them out!
Could you guys, could you go outside, please, so we can finish our meeting?
Speak! Against it! Now, what is it? We're voting you guys out.
We need a new mayor! No leadership in this town! No leadership! You forget about the kids and the families in this town!
Madam Mayor, can we please have order in the chamber? Madam Mayor, can we please have order in the chamber?
Please clear the chamber.
It's my mission to vote you out!
Please clear the chamber.
Clear the chamber, please.
You're going to be capped out at your office next week. That's it. But I'll be voting out.
Been there every week for a year now.
Racism, not representing the city! We will vote you out! Right, you will ignore social media, law, no other progress. I need to get rid of you, Ferguson! And to get rid of you, Rigby! Her two are done!
Madam Mayor, can we please have order in the chamber? Can we please have order in the chamber? Thank you.
You're out! You're out! I'm making my mission. I need to make sure.
Always good to see you, Ms. Ferguson.
Holy cow.
We're going to vote you out!
Didn't make any difference. I should have voted with you guys. Because I agree with you, but I felt like, I feel like I represent...
Yeah, if you agree, you should have voted yes. That's all I got.
We're still in session.
Okay, we're, okay, we're still in session. So, where are we? Let me find my agenda.
Did I hear you say that you wanted to reconsider your vote? Is that what I heard you say?
I'm thinking about it. Yeah, I think I would. After all that?
Okay. I think we can do that by majority vote of those who voted for the measure. I believe we can reconsider the vote. I'd make a motion to do that as a...
As, no, I believe the majority has to make the motion to reconsider, always. So, as a member of the majority, I would make a motion to reconsider under Roberts rules.
Okay. Do we have to vote on that again?
Yep.
I would second that, then. I'll second it.
Okay. So, what exactly are we voting on this time? To reconsider?
Yes.
Or to revoke?
Yeah, okay, I'll do that.
So then, after the motion to reconsider succeeds, then we need another motion to approve, is that right? Is that right?
Yeah, so we reoffer the motion.
Okay, so I would reoffer my motion, resolved that the California Values Act is inconsistent with the values of the people of Vista, and that the city of Vista supports the position of the United States of America in DOJ v. California, and California AG v. U.S. Department
That motion carries with 3 to 1. And so now, what do we have left tonight?
Move to adjourn?
Well, we have to, there's no oral communications, right? Does anybody want, do you want me to make remarks even? Does anybody care?
I do.
There's nobody here.
I have a comment to make, though, even though there is...
Do you want to know that the city's Independence Celebration goes next Wednesday, July the 4th?
I know.
Happy 4th of July. July 4th is Appreciation Day at the Wave Water Park for Military Fire and Law Enforcement. Act over retired, read admission with an ID. And then, I won't do all the rest of the announcements.
Okay. Well, I don't know if staff is still in the building or not, if staff is still in the room, but my comments are directed towards staff, because this weekend was a very, very busy weekend for us here in the city of Vista. We had the Relay for Life over at, I keep wanting to say Lincoln Middle School, but it is Vista Magnet Middle School. And for, I don't know, maybe the fifth or sixth year that I can remember, the city of Vista has sponsored a team at the Relay for Life, and they always let me participate. And we did, I think we did a really great job. And there are some people in the room, and some people in the back room, perhaps, that were there, that supported this event, and I want to say thank you to the city for sponsoring the team, and thank you to all of the city employees who came out and supported the event and worked it. And I know, Ally, even you brought your little girl out, and she walked some laps with you, and so anyway, thank you for that. As a cancer survivor myself, October 5th, 1984, I'm going on 34 years. They told me I wouldn't survive. I did. Yay! It's an important event for me personally, so thank you very much for being there. Also, this weekend was the San Diego Scottish Highland Games, which is always an amazingly fabulous event. I try hard not to miss it. I have only missed it for life events. But I want to say congratulations to our fire chief, Han, and his son, Andrew, because they both won awards at the Highland Games, Chief Han. So, I just wanted to say thank you, congratulations to you both, and thank you for how well you represent the city of Vista. So, kudos to you, and thank you to staff for all you do for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anyone else have anything tonight? How about Patrick? Our mayor, I mean, our city manager.
No. Just that city offices in the Vista Library will be closed on Independence Day, July 4th. And tomorrow, if you're watching the video on the website, that the Haynes Lot off of Broadway will be repaved and will reopen on Thursday.